Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, September 9th, meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 978-772-8220 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. First order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion changes on the agenda? Hearing none. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. The agenda is approved. The first matter is the public hearing for 12 Willow Road. We need a mo-- I make a motion to open the site plan review and stormwater management public hearing for 12 Willow Road, map 23, parcel 26.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ken, how do you vote?
Aye to open.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Danny, will you set this up for us?
Yes. So this is an application under our site plan review and stormwater management permit. This is a proposal for to construct a warehouse, or in addition to, of a warehouse on the rear of an existing building and expand a paved area.
And why did it come under site plan review?
So this triggers on a couple of things. The new commercial or industrial construction, construction or an expansion of a parking lot involving five or more new parking spaces, clearing or grading more than 10,000 square feet, or a major stormwater management apartment.
Thank you, sir.
So this project is actually currently before the Conservation Commission as well. They just had their first hearing on this last week. And so for this meeting tonight, the intent would be to have the applicant come up, go through the plans, give a quick presentation. We did provide the applicant with comments from the department head review. They have not had a chance to respond to those yet. So I think for this meeting would be merely just the presentation, any initial questions that the board may have, and then from there, a continuance so that the applicant could have a chance to respond and revise plans accordingly.
That makes total sense to me. Okay, great. We have representatives of the applicant here.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, hello. Good evening. You know the drill. Name.
Titles, and I'm going to ask you to speak loudly so the people in the back of the room can hear you.
Sure. For the record, Jim Basile, Go Smith Preston Ringwall.
Limited.
Also an engineer at GPR.
Also present is the applicant, Joe Morano of Creative Materials.
Welcome.
So, thank you. Much like Danny said, I just give a quick summary of the project and then turn it over to all of you for questions and comments that you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So on behalf of Creative Materials, we prepared the site plan and stormwater permit for property at 12 Willow Road for the expansion of the existing development. The lot is located on the easterly side of Willow Road, is a partially developed with a mix of grass, wooded, and impervious surfaces. The existing building, which you can see as the big square on the left-hand side, approximately 24, approximately 24,150 square feet. This is access via access drive from Willow Road that comes up to the site, and there is existing parking on the north and westerly face of the building. To the rear of the building, there are two existing loading bays, and also an existing pavement area for delivery trucks to do their turning maneuvers in order to make their deliveries. There's an existing stormwater system that handles the impervious runoff and roof runoff from the existing development. This network of existing catch basins that tie into an infiltration basin, which is located further to the east portion of the site. We don't have that shown on here, but the property also contains several resource areas, which are in front of the Conservation Commission for currently. These include a FEMA Zone A to the north of the property, a unnamed brook to the north of the property as well, which falls under the Riverfront Protection Act, so that projects a 100 and 200-foot riverfront area on the property. There's also two boring vegetated wetlands located on the west and north of the property, and these all project buffers and limitations on the site. So we are kind of limited in any, where we can develop, so we're trying to work.
Is this the 50 and then the 100?
So this one right here is the 50, right here.
This one, right?
Yep, and then this is the 100.
Okay, good.
And then this line is the 200-foot riverfront, right here.
Correct, yes. So Creative Materials, in 2011, the property was acquired, and since then, this has been their headquarters, manufacturing, and administrative office. They have been a, you know, in business for 14 years and very successful, that they are looking to the future to expand, which is the catalyst for this warehouse addition, as well as restriping the parking lots so that they can have additional parking that is, meets the bylaw for the new additional square footage in the warehouse. Because of where the warehouse needs to be located, it falls in the location where trucks would do their turning maneuvers, so we do need additional pavement area for those trucks to come in. In the northwest portion of the property, on the existing building, they're also updating the facade of the building to renovate the front entry, but also, it's been some time since it was last updated, so just trying to bring that up to date. Part of the reworking of the front entry is to bring the ADA parking spaces more in line with today's code.
Which means moving them closer to the front door.
Correct, and we have them shown on that westerly side currently. We do, we have had some discussion with the landscape architect and the client about if those parking spaces may be better off in the north portion, where they would have a similar or equal distance to the front entry in the way that it's being reworked, which we have just provided that plan today as something that we are considering. So if that is the path that we go, we would update the plan accordingly. A large portion of the project is in the back, which is the new impervious area and the warehouse building, and for that, we are proposing stormwater improvements to the site. These stormwater improvements include a infiltration chamber system underneath the proposed pavement area, which will be collected via two catch basins for--
There we go.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is, okay.
So that box there is the infiltration chambers, so there'll be two catch basins, which will collect runoff from the new impervious area, and this will convey it into a proprietary structure, which will provide advanced pollutant removal prior to entering the infiltration chamber system. It is also collecting runoff from a large portion of the existing stormwater system. It's roughly 33% of the impervious area that was going into the existing stormwater system is now being collected into that, the proposed infiltration chambers, which have been sized for one inch of recharge for the impervious area, and it'll also be routed through the proprietary structure for advanced pollutant removal. Lastly, for the stormwater, we're also proposing a proprietary structure within the existing stormwater network, so that prior to discharging towards the infiltration basin in the east portion of the property, it will go through this proprietary structure--
Yep.
--and remove, have advanced pollutant removal. Do you have the, the color rendering that we had sent today?
So, I don't have it--
Okay, that's fine. I can just explain--
Kind of a little crazy right now.
No, sorry. So at the rear of the development, the south face of the building, we are maintaining a 50-foot landscape buffer between the edge of the development and the property line, which is a mix of grass and wooded areas. In addition to that, between Longview Meadow, during our Concom meeting, there was some concern regarding the amount of clearing that was being done, so we had put together a rendering to show that there will be a 50-foot woodland buffer that is maintained between the edge of the development and the rear, the backyards of the houses up, uphill in that development.
Longview Circle?
Yes, thank you. Parking. So we have begun to receive comments from various departments, so we'd love to go over those with all of you if you'd like, but we'd like to also go through any questions, comments that you guys might have at this time right now.
Okay. So I want to open up to my board colleagues first, questions regarding the plan?
My only comment is, I looked at the application, I read it today, and I thought it was very complete. But it's just too early for me to comment on, you know, exactly what's going on, but I did look at the package, and I thought the package was very professional, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just want to ask about the 50-foot buffer. So is this a passive? In other words, you're leaving the 50-foot, or do you think you're reinforcing the 50 feet with additional plantings, or are there anything else?
We're leaving.
We're leaving the natural vegetation. Currently, we don't have any plant to add--
Okay.
--additional screening, but we are in the process of trying to reduce the amount of clearing back on, on the hill there. Just kind of minimize our grading to be done, and then try and leave as many trees as we can. Prior, following the conservation meeting, we do have survey crew schedule, I think sometime the next couple of weeks, to go out and locate all the trees within the areas that we're actually doing clearing. So we'll have a pretty good idea of how many trees there are, and where we can try to limit the grading, as well as get a number of tree count, so that we can provide replacement planting to make up for the ones that we're taking out.
Good, good.
Yeah, so I'll take back what I said before. Jonathan opened it up. I noticed that the building is like 35 feet tall, it's taller, quite a bit taller than the existing building. Does that affect how you look at the screening, and how you think about the screening because of the height of the building?
It does a little bit, but with, with the height of about 34 feet, we're still only up about 10 feet from, so if you're standing on the property line--
Above, you mean?
Above, yep.
So it's not 270, right?
So it comes up about 10 feet higher than that 270, roughly. So, you know, we have trees that are, I want to say in the range of 30 to 50 feet in that area, so it is still a decent amount of screening that we're leaving intact.
Sightwalk anyway. Yeah. Thank you.
Nathan, please.
We're going to get, DPW still hasn't weighed in yet.
So DPW did provide comments to the applicant--
Okay.
--but we, the applicant hasn't had a chance to respond to them just yet.
Just a, then I'll just make a couple of comments, or lightweight questions, which is, if you can, what is the nature of Creative Materials business?
Sure. They manufacture and produce specialty chemicals such as, well, I, I don't, can't give you specifics about them, but like specialty like hangs and dyes, I believe.
Adhesives.
Oh, it's adhesives.
Specialty adhesives. Real good, nice.
And then my comment is, you know, this is one of a few businesses in that area of town that are growing and expanding. I think you've been involved. It's, you know, our small town depends, benefits a lot from the commercial businesses, and it's good to see an application. Look forward to the, the comments and reviewing this more thoroughly.
So I just want to clarify something. So the additional space you described as a warehouse, so I don't anticipate inside that there's actual chemical processing in that part of the building, there's no, it's pretty, I imagine, low impact because it is primarily a warehouse? Is that a correct understanding of it?
That is the intent currently. I cannot speak, you know, what may come in the future. Ultimately, you know, I think Joe mentioned that when they first acquired the property, they have about 11 employees. They're currently at about 30-some-odd employees, and ultimately, the goal is to try to get as close to 50 as they can. Obviously, you know, like Nathan said, it is a local business that's trying to employ more local employees, so ultimately, that space could be used--
As partial warehouse, office--
A mix of things.
Okay.
And at that point, if the applicant, you know, does end up trying to add an additional use within it, you know, they'd need an approval from the development commissioner on that.
Yeah, good, excellent. Any further questions or comments from my board colleagues? I'd like to open up for public input from the room first and then Zoom. Is there anyone who has a question or comment on this particular? Yes, please step up.
Lori Nearing, 35 Highland Avenue, Air. I have a couple of things. I looked over your proposal online just today, so it's rather fresh in my mind, and I noticed that you have three different waivers, and I was wondering if you could--
Can I just--
Yes.
Add all your questions through the chair?
Okay, sorry. I'll try to be better about that. I noticed that there were three waiver requests, and one of my concerns, I think, is that I'm not clear where our Zone 2 is related to the Spectacle Pond Wells in this facility, so I didn't see that on a map, or if it's going to be addressed at some point, but the waivers seem to suggest that it might impact the groundwater at Spectacle Pond Wells. And in lieu of the chemicals that are going to be used here, you mentioned adhesives. I believe in adhesives and maybe some other chemical use has some toxic city in it, and I wouldn't want the toxic chemicals to have some sort of accident and end up in the groundwater that would end up in our drinking water supply. I wondered if that could be addressed, if this is an appropriate time for that.
So in terms of the waiver that you-- Sorry, hold on. The waiver request, you're talking about the one that they're requesting from the easement from the stormwater regulations?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, so that's not, basically, that waiver is when the town, it's for a project that the town is going to either, if it's private, they ask for a waiver, if it's going to be eventually taken over by the town, then that's part of the requirement. So because this is a private property, they're asking for the waiver.
Through the chair. My understanding is that there was a second waiver--
Wait, 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 could you explain, excuse me, first, could you clarify what exactly is being waived, what requirement? Okay, because I think there's some confusion right here.
Yes, so the, so the first one in which, and because I think you're talking about the, the next one you're talking about is this one right up here, but I'll, I'll get to that one. So the first one is Section 210B1. That's unless waived by the authority, the stormwater management easement shall be granted to the town of Air and be sufficient in location and extent to allow the town to access the property in all areas used for off-site stormwater control in order to facilitate inspections and allow the town to, the right to perform required maintenance. So that first one right there is a waiver. We have that in our regulations for typically for projects that the town is eventually going to take over, but since the town will not be taking this over, the applicant is requesting the waiver, as we typically have, and they will retain all of the maintenance duties and all of, all that. But as part of that, they will be required to, as part of the stormwater management permit, they'll be required to submit inspection logs and all of the O and M plan information to us yearly. That's part of our requirements.
I want to clarify to anyone listening, so what's being waived here is not the stormwater requirement or any requirement regarding the chemicals. What's being waived is, is the town's access--
Just an easement.
--the easement portion, not the obligation to have the appropriate controls. Two different things.
And then the second waiver that they're requesting is require all stormwater management systems to, one, retain the volume of runoff equivalent to or greater than one inch multiplied by the total post-construction impervious area of the site, and/or, two, remove 90% of the average annual load of TSS, which is total suspended solids generated from the total post-construction impervious area on the site, and 60% of the average annual load of the total phosphorus generated from the total post-construction impervious surface area on site. So on this one, I have not had a chance to have an inspect, a discussion with Matt Hernan, the town engineer, so we're not going to make any formal votes on any of these waivers right now, so I don't, I don't have it, I don't have a cha, I haven't had a chance to speak to them yet, so I don't want to speak on that one just yet.
That's in the works. You're, you're still working on that one?
Yep.
I understand. Through the chair, do you know where the Zone 2 is in relationship to your extension on the building?
This is what, what, Zone 2?
The Zone 2, our wellhead protection area.
May I answer?
Is that relevant?
So we are, we are within the Zone 2. In terms of the onsite stormwater management, when you're in the Zone 2, or what's known as a critical area, you do have to meet a 44% pretreatment for TSS removal prior to discharging it to an infiltration system, which then further provide a removal rate of 80% TSS removal. We meet those requirements by providing the CDS units, the proprietary systems shown on the plan, to remove the sediment on site. More importantly, I kind of want to speak a little bit about what was brought up about the chemical on site. Creative Materials is a professional company that deals with chemical. Yes, that is correct. Any byproduct from their work is being trucked off, carefully, you know, discarded, trucked off, to be incinerated off-site. They're not dumping chemical, anything into the existing well and area nearby. That is not the case at all. Much like any other companies that deal with chemical, they do have to go through inspection, you know, all these things that they have to do for the last 14 years, they've done it. They keep, you know, a very clean site, as you can see, if you're just standing on the driveway looking in, it is a very clean site on both the outside and inside, so they're very careful with, you know, their image. So I just don't want to, I just want to have that comment out there, you know, stating otherwise. So, you know, while I appreciate the comment, I just want to make that correction, just so that we have that straight.
We get it.
Through the chair.
Yes, Lori.
I appreciate that comment. We don't know anything about your business. We have had a number of spills in the Zone 2 area by accidents and unexpected things, broken pipes, ice slippings with cars, you know, all sorts of things that you can't plan on, so we just need to be, this is our water source, and we're all working really hard to make sure that it stays clean. We spent tremendous amounts of money with, for filtration because of PPHOS issues, and as you may know, it's a PPHOS--
Are there other questions, Lori?
Yeah.
Just on that one, Lori.
Yeah.
I understand where you're coming from. There is a, you know, there is a process in which if a spill occurs, and I know you know this very well, there's DEPs notified, fire departments notified, you know, there is a process on if that happens, on how to stop it immediately, and from what I know so far, there has not been any spills.
I know of several spills that didn't get noticed--
But we're, we're talking about Creative Materials here.
Bob Willow.
We're not, we're not, you know, misconstruing with other properties here. This is specifically Creative Materials on 12 Willow Road. We're not going to, I can't allow you to start bringing in other properties on this.
I do have one other question, and this is very quick. Many, many industries or businesses that have come in recently have asked for waivers about bicycle racks. I noticed you did too. It's a tiny thing. We want to move in the direction of encouraging people to bike to work and to maybe bike from the train station, and it just sets a precedent and an image on the town, and I would encourage you to remove that waiver request. Thank you.
Any other public input from the room?
I--
Come up, come to the--
I'm loud enough?
No, you, no, but you-- We got to get you on the camera.
Good evening, everyone. Beth Sidmire, 16 Nashua Street.
Could you move closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Just want to reiterate, I'm sorry that I wasn't here at the start. I have reviewed some of the documents. I don't understand why we are having so many requests for stormwater waivers. This is, it's very basic stuff. You know, there's much, much larger projects that go in and meet all the stormwater requirements, and in some communities with much larger projects that have much more rigorous stormwater requirements. So I really, really want us to protect our water, our infrastructure, and I want us to make sure that we are really holding the applicants. We want the best project possible for everyone, but I want to make sure that we're holding them to a standard that our town deserves. We deserve infrastructure that we don't have to pay more for because it's being damaged. We disturb, deserve clean water.
They all agree.
Yes.
There's no argument here, Beth.
Okay.
So, Ken, Ken, so I know you weren't here at the beginning, and this is what I stated early, I said, we're not voting on any of these waivers. I have not had a chance to have a discussion with Matt Hernan, the town engineer, regarding the stormwater regulation waiver on this one for Section 2.8C, which is the one that is in question. We're not making any votes here right now, so I understand where you're coming from, but I, we have not had a chance.
I think you do, because stormwater's important.
We know that.
And I work with stormwater, and I feel like it's being really dismissed quite a bit, and I just wanted to get out front of it. I can't make it to many meetings.
I don't know why you think it's being dismissed--
I, I, I can't think of a single instance we've been dismissive of stormwater requirements, ever. Ever. Thank you. Is there further input from the room? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. So we need a continuance, correct? Motion for continuance? Anyone want to do it? Oh--
I just want to throw this out there, because we're already done a sight walk with conservation. Would the planning board like to--
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Typically, we do Thursdays. Is that going to work? Thursday morning at eight? Is, Thursday morning at, Thursday, a Thursday morning at eight is our usual, that seems to work for everyone. Would that work for you?
Definitely.
Kathleen?
Starting with Jeff.
Yeah.
So what's Kathleen's?
I'm, I'm gone for two weeks, starting on the 16th.
Oh, so you, so you won't be here for the 23rd?
Okay.
Yeah, we did talk about that. You're right.
Okay. Okay, Thursday's back. Sorry.
Which Thursday?
So I would say maybe the 18th, because I'm out this week, still.
Would that work for you, for you guys? At, at 8:00 AM?
We have staked out, we do have some, some areas, the proposed development staked out already.
Great.
I can reach out to Danny offline to see if there's any additional staking that, that you guys would like, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 12 Willow Road, site plan review and stormwater management permit, to our next planning board meeting, which is what, the--
September 23rd.
September 23rd. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Kathleen got that.
We'll give it to Kathleen for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you at the next meeting.
So before we, before this discussion, I guess, sorry, should we have asked the applicant that they will have all the responses by the next meeting?
I can, I can follow up with them offline. I'll shoot them an email. They should, they should have it. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is Zero Winthrop Avenue, the VOA parking lot. We have a representative, the applicant, or the engineer, somebody.
They're going to come up. One second.
Good evening. You can move that microphone closer to you, if you would. Thank you. Danny, can you set up what we can do with this today, where we're going with Zero Winthrop this evening?
Yes, so the applicant did respond to comments from the department heads. They also responded to my town planner comments. They revised the plans. They have also addressed, did a lighting plan to address the comment regarding lighting. So if the board wants to go through the comments, and then go through the lighting plan, and then we can, and then from there, go to, and see what the next steps are.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, so.
Start with yours.
Yeah, start with mine. So, ch, 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 ch. Comment number one was the, uh, regarding the address that, that the application should be amended. This, uh, the applicant's going to be providing an updated.
We did, I think we updated it on the plan, yeah.
The, the plan shows.
Oh, I'm sorry. You meant the application. Nope, I did not do that.
The photometric plan was submitted, so that is here, if it loads. We can come back to that.
So, we fix the address? Is that the answer to the first comment?
Yes, yes. Uh, photometric plan was submitted, and when it loads, we'll get, we'll get to that. The application states that the stormwater report was also submitted, uh, but, so this one was regarding the calculations. It's, uh, the stormwater was actually included as part of the overall for Lincoln Hill, but they did provide actual, uh, calculations within the plan on the, um, on page four of the, um, the detail sheet.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, the first one is, uh, the site plan does not show the location of the bottle, bollard lights. Please revise to show the plan. They're no longer going to be doing bollard lights. They're going to have two light poles, and those are shown on the photometrics plan, if it loads.
So, you're able to go back and forth from the plan to the comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Trying to.
Load.
Load this. I don't know what's going on. Yeah. We'll see if we can come back to, to that. All right, the plan shows a bioretention area, but no landscape. The plan shows a bioretention area, but no landscape plan or planting list was included in the bioretention area. Please provide a landscape plan or a proposed planting list. The site plan includes screening to abutting lots where, um, arborvitae are proposed. The planting list for the bioretention basin is included in the detailed plan.
So, just a clarification, the red is the response from the applicant?
That is correct.
Is that sufficient response?
Yes, yes. So, um, on the plan, they do show, um, a line of arborvitae along the property line over here, and on the plant, they did provide a planting list here on the plans, as well as showing them on the, in the bioretention. Air zoning bylaws, section nine point one six A one, parking facilities with more than five parking spaces shall be bordered on all sides except for required access drives with landscape buffer and sufficient density and, and height to provide effective screening for parking vehicles. This is tied into the comment seven to see where the limit of clearing is, and if existing vegetation is sufficient to meet the buffer requirement. The only screening necessary is on the north side, uh, but close to the lot line so that there's adequate snow storage. And so, with, that's where the arborvitae are shown, which provides the screening. The site plan does not show the limit of clearing. Please revise to show the limit of clearing. Uh, the erosion control barrier is included on the site plan. See note two for construction sequence on erosion and sediment control for further details on marking, uh, marking limit of clearing. So, you can see on the plan, they do show the, I'll zoom in a little bit more. You can see the erosion control along the line right here. The, a detail for the erosion controls were not shown on the site plan. Please revise included detail. Details shown for straw wattle, which includes a silt fence.
And that's on there? Good. Good.
The applicant will need a, need to add an ADA compliance connection from the proposed parking lot to the existing sidewalk to the front of the building. Please review section nine point one seven B of the air zoning bylaws. A sidewalk is added. The sidewalk is right there. Bicycle accommodations were not included under required under section nine point one point nine in the air zoning bylaws pre-revised site plan or provide a waiver request, considering that this is additional parking or a replacement of the VOA, um, uh, replacement to parking on High Street to VOA site. Bicycle stands can be placed elsewhere if necessary, and hence a waiver will be requested if necessary. So, on this one is, um, are you gonna?
My suggestion is that we put it someplace else on the VO property, just not out there in that parking lot, it's probably not.
Okay. And I would say that could be a, made a condition.
Okay. Great.
The site plan shows the, the hatched area next to the handicap space is eight feet wide, which is larger than five. My understanding, at least one van accessible parking must be provided, and hence shown, uh, as such. However, it can be changed if the board sees alternative.
It's good. Where, eight feet is five.
The site plan, yes. So, that's this right here.
Thanks.
Uh, the site plan does not show snow storage areas. Please revise plans to show the snow storage location. Snow storage is shown on the northerly side of the parking. You can now see it right there. Snow storage was, will be restricted from being, um, pushed into the bioretention area. Signs can be provided stating no snow storage near the location of the bioretention. That would also be made a condition. Um, and then the last one is, the applicant will need to provide an. Put this, you can just put a note to add the sign, can't you, on the plan? Yes, but I, I would still require it as a condition. Yeah. Um, the applicant will need to provide an A and R, um, plan for the creation of parcels A one and A two. The A and R plan will be provided prior to the final approval.
Can I just make a comment about the A and R?
Yes.
Actually, the A and R, okay. Um, the A and R plan that we're going to be producing for, uh, the other development, um, the major development, will include this. So, it'll be just one plan.
I actually met with, um, the engineer that does that last week, and.
David R.
Yeah, he said that, yeah. He said that this is the way to do it.
And that can be made a condition.
Okay. Just for clarification, the, the final A and R drawing that'll be done for me, two pieces. Will incorporate all the lots.
Right.
And tie into this.
Yes.
VOA building in its lot, whatever the case might be.
Yes.
The re, reason for that, well.
I mean, they could do it either way.
The reason I say this is because the VOA property is part of the open space development.
Yeah.
And we're just cutting a little piece off of that for this. So, it's just one plan.
So, it's going to be done, so what we would.
Talk about it later.
Yeah, I mean, the, when it comes doesn't matter as long as it comes, so for us.
I mean, we would require that it happened before anything started construction at all, um, for either of these.
Which is kind of what we required on, um, Pine Street Extension, that the A and R come before anything.
Any further discussion this evening on Twelve Willow, Danny?
I guess.
Was there another?
Zero Winthrop. I'm sorry. I apologize to everyone.
Yes, so, on that one.
Second page.
Yes, because the, my computer and the, my, the computers upstairs were still finicky, so, um, I couldn't get the, um, comments up on the website. I don't believe I got them up on there. Which were the responses which you have currently in front of you. Yeah, I did not get them up on the website, but I will, I can read through them.
Okay.
And if, I can, let me print out a couple of copies in case anyone else wants them.
Sir Chair, could I, question on the, what we covered right now?
Yeah, actually, maybe we could take a couple of minutes recess?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm going to call a five-minute recess. We'll be joined at the top of the hour. Thank you.
I'll explain that quickly once again. So, the, uh, orange line, as you see here, basically shows the exact, where the direct light hits, and the numbers that are, um, a, around it basically measure how many, um, the foot candles or the lumens of the, um, light. And as it goes further off proper, um, off the parking lot, it goes down to zero so that it shows that it's not going to be, um, going off property.
Good. Now, Danny, are we going through these department head comments?
Yeah, yes, so we're going to go through those as well.
Danny, the other thing they may not have talked about, I mean, it's just that Chief Guild hasn't seen that and approved it, or.
Yes.
Give a thumbs up on it.
Yes, Chief Guild did review those and, um, did, uh, say that they worked for the, um, uh, for security purposes.
Great.
Let me just get the other comments from. Running a little slow. Here we go. All right. These are the comments that were responses to the department head comments. So, the first one is for the DPW's comments. So, the erosion controls, uh, silt fence and straw water shall be provided around the area of the disturbance during construction. C-plan, um, ES erosion and sediment control plan, um, has been provided, so we, I showed that previously, the plan that shows where the, um, so, the silt fence and the straw waddles will go. All disturbed areas surrounding the parking lot will be loomed and seeded. See erosion control and sediment notes for that. Lighting shall be provided at a location approved by the planning board. We just went through the, um, lighting plan. An approved planting list shall be provided for the, uh, bioretention basin prior to the installation. That was also shown on the plan and was also reviewed by, um, uh, Matt and Heather.
Great. I see the next is the fire department con, comments, and, uh, Chief Johnson's asked if he can just explain why there's no fire department issues. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I might add, I noticed, um, maybe when Danny had, um, sent out some correspondence, there were comments, I was surprised the fire department didn't have any comments. And if I might add, like, we look at this independently, we're not, you know, for, against a particular project, myself, the deputy chief, and the fire prevention officer sit down, we take a look at project one, we go over, are there any applicable state laws, regulations, fire codes? And the answer to that was no, on this particular project. Number two, are there any local or state codes, ordinances that apply? I mean, I'm sorry, local bylaws or ordinances, you know, fire codes that this, the town has? The answer to that was no. And lastly, we look, are there any reoccurring problems that we have as a fire department, like, from the public safety point of view, when we respond up there? I certainly have been up there many times. I reached out to the staff, and the overwhelming answer was no. Now, keep in mind, it's an assisted living facility. We go up there fairly often with the AMS, occasionally with the fire truck. And, and do we encounter traffic occasionally in the roundabout? Sure. I mean, they don't have transportation, so people are picking up to and from. And have we occasionally had to back an ambulance in? Sure, and they might have to wait? Yeah, but there was no overwhelming answer to say, no, this wouldn't work. It would be more congest, at, at least in, independently from the fire department's position only. And like I said, even to the neighbors who see me go up there fairly often, I don't pull into the driveway. I let that be for the people who are there. You'll see me park out on Winthrop, and I walk in. It's just what we do, you know? Ambulance, fire truck. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that people might have as to why, that, you know, that we didn't have any other answer. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
The police department comments, so that was regarding the, um, uh, lighting, which the photometrics plan, they did review. We just discussed, and that Chief Guild did review it. Uh, the conservation agent, the project is outside the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. However, given the sensitivity of the wildlife habitat, um, area surrounding the proposed parking area, lighting should be limited and comply with the town's bylaws and the dark sky applied. Location should be shown on the plan, which is the. The proposed bioretention area needs to have a construction detail sheet that's submitted with the proposed planting plan. Given the detailed maintenance, uh, schedule for the bioretention areas and need to monitor the vegetation, an O and M plan, uh, should be, uh, submitted, should also be submitted. So, the construction detail does show the bioretention, um, uh, area, the proposed planting list, and, um, they said that the request, an O and M plan, be a condition of approval.
Beautiful. Anything else on Zero Winthrop? My colleagues, questions, comments? Yes, sir. Go for it.
So, to the best of our knowledge, no other thoughts, questions have come up from you or other department heads beyond what we're looking at tonight?
No.
Pretty much thoroughly have covered. What came in previously, like, a month ago, something like that?
Yep.
And now have gone through it.
Yes.
So, the only thing that we're really looking at is this last item, which is the, they will produce, it says, "We request an O and M plan," meaning the applicant will put an O and M plan in.
Yeah.
As part of our final approval.
Yes. It'll be a condition of an approval. It'll be condition, it'll be a condition of the approval.
Okay.
And we would usually condition that prior to any site work.
Sir Chair?
Yes, sir, Nathan.
My memory is that we talked about having the accessible site placed in the, um, existing property and trading spots, and I just want to know, I think that was, um, discussed in the, in the, I just want to know what happened. I think.
So, when that happened, um, I, I had, did, I did reach out to Mike about it, and then we, at that point, I had a child and haven't had a time to really discuss that, so the applicant actually just went ahead with.
With the existing. Okay.
Anything else? Julie, Kathleen? Do you have one?
Yeah, I had a question. So, I think we heard from some of the abutters about traffic concerns coming down Webster Ave. And so, my understanding is that the parking lot is for employees only. Um, I didn't see on the plans any signage that, uh, employee-only parking, and, um, are there plans to put that at the top of Webster Ave so that you don't have, like, a delivery vehicle come down and turn around and then come back? Can we speak to that?
Yes, um, we did talk about not only adding a, um, employee parking sign, but also adding a sign out on, um, Winthrop Ave that said, um, pointed delivery vehicles to, to the hi, uh, High Street side, that they would say, you know, deliveries, please go to High Street. And, um, I did clear that with, um, the VOA, and they are, oh, you know, they are in agreement that that would be acceptable to place that signage.
And we would make that a condition of the approval as well.
And so, the signage is going to say, uh, what? Sorry, there's no delivery and employee only, feel like two.
Two signs.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so there'll be, like, an employees-only sign pointing people this way, and a no-delivery sign.
Yep.
And those will be up there at the top.
Out at the street. There's signage there now.
Okay.
So, I thought we could just get something that would be attractive and, you know, go with what they have. But, um, it would be custom, so I would obviously send, send it to you for approval.
Yeah, as part of the condition, when I write it up, uh, we'll write it up in a way that, you know, before.
It's installed, yeah.
It gets installed, it's, it gets sent over to me and to Mike to review to make sure that it's, it's all set.
Okay.
Any further, yes, Nathan?
Yeah, one more. Um, the, the revised plans were the plans, they currently show the discussed, um, guardrail.
Uh, the guardrail that goes along, um, that was requested along here?
Yes.
It does not.
I think there was a reason, though. You did.
I did. I did.
But there was, but, but there was a reason that we didn't add it. It was to do with.
It was gonna help with the snow, too.
Snow, right. Well, we were talking about putting signage so that snow, you know.
And there was no curb. There was no curb.
There's no curb because the water needs to sheet off into the, right. You want?
Certainly, I think it'd be very good to have a guardrail on that northeast corner.
Yeah, and there were two sides.
Yes.
Like a wooden-type guardrail?
Yeah. Same guardrail we're using on the other project.
Yeah. It prevents, it prevents snow from being pushed that direction. It allows the water, and it is the downhill side with no curb.
Yeah, yeah. How, how do we wanna do that? Do you wanna do that condition of approval as just a guardrail, same detail?
Take the detail off the other plan and put it on this plan, revise the plan. We can, we can do a condition of approval, but the final set of plans, you would show them on the final set of plans.
Yeah, on the final set of plan. Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comments or questions on the board? Any questions or comments from the public on Zero Winthrop, the VOA parking area? Hello?
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Yes, and thank you again for your time. My name is Lynn Shaw, 42 Highland Avenue. If you're wondering where I'm coming from, my house is at the very end of Winthrop. So, I get to see it all. So, my first question is, why is parking lot being moved? I, I don't understand that.
Who would like to take that one?
So, as part of, right down here, the, there was some concern regarding backing into a public road because the currently, the way their parking lot right now is, they back up right into a street, which is not allowed. And so, what was requested was that they would move that out of there. That would be made a loading zone for, only for trucks, and the parking would be moved up here where then there would be less concerns regarding them backing into a, a street.
Okay, so, I'm driving down Central Ave, and all the businesses, their parking is right in front, and everybody pulls backs into Central Street. So, why do we allow that to go on, but we can't?
Those are not new projects that are going before the planning board.
So, in the future, they wouldn't be able to back into a main street?
If, if in the future they came before us?
Some of those buildings are fairly, well, some of the businesses are fairly new.
So, if they come before the planning board before us, when we review it, if we deem that it is not safe, then at that point, there's a discussion that needs to happen.
I was just curious. Another question or concern I have is when I drive up there, that parking lot is always filled. So, I say, why? And I say, why? Because if you go into the other parking lot, there's so much congestion that people wanna get in and out quickly. And they can't if you have to go by the main entrance. So, because the fire trucks are there, and sometimes they do pull in. And so, I'm thinking that we're just gonna add more congestion to an already congested area. So, I was concerned about how much more congestion we're going to have, and why the employees now like to park on that side.
And that's a valid concern, but there's a reason why they made employees so that they would be only on. You would really only have the, the shift leaving and shift entering traffic.
Right. And my final concern, that I know you're not thrilled when we advocate for people with disabilities or people, elderly people, because it should come from them.
Please don't put words in my mouth.
No, no, no. Because it should come from, and you're right, it should come from the facility. They should be here, they should be advocating. So, I'm not trying, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just, I guess disappointed that they're not here advocating for their clients. Please understand, too, that I've spent five years taking care of very elderly parents who were in and out of facilities like this. So, I really understand what goes on there, and that's probably why I'm here, because I really feel like I owe it to them. And my last concern would be, or my last suggestion might be, if you wanna put the parking lot back there, maybe you could take the parking lot and connect it to High Street. So, now we have two entrances and two exits. Because I worry that if there were a fire, or if there were something going on, you only have one entrance and one exit. So, if we had two, so if you just connected it to High Street, then people could come up High Street and go around. And for me, that would be better safety. And my last point is this is where you wanna add more traffic, and this is what happens every single day. We have eight to 10 people. They congregate right where you're gonna add more traffic. So, how are we gonna keep these people safe? So, that's my final point, and I would like to add this to the record because people like this don't move fast. And now you're gonna add 30, 40 cars a day coming in and out of that, well, because of the shifts change. So, the people come in, the people come out.
These are the same amount of parking spaces that were on High Street, they're just being moved.
But now they're being moved where all the people walk. So, that's the main entrance, that's where they come, that's where they, you know, enter, that's where they leave. So, I just think it, we need to really think about this, we need to be thoughtful. And assisted living is very different than nursing home care. In assisted living, people can do what they wanna do. They can come, they can go, they drive. So, we need to make sure that we keep everybody safe in the neighborhood. So, thank you for listening to me, and I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. I'm just advocating for.
Understandable.
Yeah, elderly. And thank you for your time.
Yes, of course you would.
I just wanted to share, because Chief Johnson had shared that they had thoroughly looked at this in the one way as a concern. We've had other projects before where that has been a concern. And the fire department not only addresses that, but they're also very welcoming to that conversation. And I know, I've met with them multiple times on the side to learn more about why they have that thoroughly covered. They're open and available for those conversations because they're very knowledgeable on it.
Oh, they're wonderful. They saved my husband when he fell off the roof. So, so I'm indebted to them for life. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Nathan.
One quick comment, too. If you recall, Platt Builders was here before us on Central Ave, and their parking was changed to be parallel to the street.
Thank you.
Park that way every day.
They do.
Do we have anything on Zoom? Who is it? What? I'm sorry, I couldn't see. All right, come on up.
But could you tell me, is there anyone lined up on Zoom? Okay.
I am Laurie Sable, and I live at 1 Winthrop Avenue. And I had planned to read this letter at the last meeting, but there was the continuance. And I'm, since I wrote this letter, some of the issues have been resolved or addressed in some other kind of way. So, I'm not gonna go through everything, which I'm sure nobody is unhappy about. I, but I, I do wanna point out a few things. I, I guess it's redundant to say that Webster Avenue constantly has deliveries and regular visits by ambulances and fire engines, so I won't say anything more about that. As somebody who lives right next door, I notice that all the time. And I, I hope everybody is aware that Webster Avenue is not just a straight road as it looks like it is here. It's actually got a.
Yeah, this, this right here.
Substantial bump out, I don't know, yeah, which affects.
I mean, it's.
And I, again, I did some, some of my own calculations about the width of the road, but I, I defer to the, to the fire chief and to the police chief about these things. If they're not concerned, I'm not concerned. I, I want to go back to something from a few meetings ago. In my, in the letter that my husband read, because I was out of the country, can Mr. Diskin mentioned that the abutters were notified as required by law? And that is true, but that's not what I was talking about, and I just want to clarify that so everyone's on the same page. What I wrote in my letter was that the developers could have spoken to the abutters before the plan was put on paper to gauge our concerns, the impacts on our property. And as I said in the letter, I think that discussion would have gone a long way to engender goodwill, at least at my property, and maybe those of my neighbors, too. And I know that at the August meeting, you agreed with that sentiment, and I'm, I'm appreciative that you did and that you acknowledged that issue. Next item, the, the bump out. There it is. I, I asked in the letter I wrote to Danny about this, who owns that bump out? We've seen a bunch of different maps from different time periods, and my issue with it is, it's really unsightly. It's very weedy. I don't know if the VOA owns it, I don't know if the property, property owners on the other side own it. But I would seriously encourage somebody to take a look at that and just pull those weeds or, or improve, beautify that area. We're, we're going to a huge amount of expense and anxiety on this project. It would be nice if we didn't have this nasty-looking area right there in, in the front entrance of the, of the Nashoba Park. Why can't some of the employees take advantage of the plentiful parking that exists on Winthrop Avenue? I don't feel like I've gotten a good answer to that question. There's, there is plenty of parking. I'm not, I'm not discounting the importance of having the parking lot. I think it, it's been made clear, but maybe it doesn't really need to be that big if the people could park on the street. I don't feel like I'm gonna get a satisfactory answer to that. I'm just putting it out there on the table as something that I've been concerned about and that I've asked about.
So, one thing on that, I believe one of the bigger concerns is snow. I believe, I'm not sure what the policy is. I know we have a, you know, certain sides of the street can be parked during the winter and not. I don't know what it's like up here. I just, so I'd assume that may be, might be a factor. I don't know.
Okay. One of my questions was about that, the ANR. I don't understand it, but I don't think, I, I guess I'm not gonna pursue that. I, I also, I don't understand, can you move the, can you move up so we see the other?
Oh, down here?
Thank you, the High Street extension. So, what you're saying, if I understand it correctly, is where those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 cars are now, that's going to be parking for, currently, the VOA van parks there. I assume they'll still be parking there?
So, what'll happen is, this will be hatched off, and they'll pull in and park right here, along this, and use it as the loading area for, because this is where they pull in all their, you know, anything that they receive.
Right. So, you're not concerned that trucks are pulling in and out of there and possibly disturbing or disrupting the traffic that there's going to be on High Street?
No, so, the concern here is backing out into a road, into a street?
Yeah, okay. Okay.
You can't see at that point, whereas in if a truck, a truck is pulling in backwards and pulling into a loading, now you're parallel with the part, with the traffic.
Okay. What is the process for responding to, this maybe is a question for you, Jonathan? What is the process for responding to public input that's made when we email and write to you? Do all members see the correspondence? Is it discussed among you? I, I know, obviously, you take the lead. I don't know if you're, if you take the lead because, well, you're skilled, you're schooled and skilled in this. But I, I don't hear a lot from the members of the planning board.
So.
You're not allowed to?
No, so.
We can't talk to each other about that.
Yeah, so, there's open.
But during.
So, the way it works is typically, when you send me an email, I respond to everything that I can, and I, they see everything that goes out. They see everything that comes in, they see everything that goes out. They don't respond because of open meeting laws. If they're going to discuss anything, they're only allowed to discuss it during a meeting. So, if there is a concern between the board members on one of my responses or one of your comments, and they feel that need to be discussed, they will bring them up during the public hearing if they feel that.
Okay. I feel like I, it's just a conversation between whoever's sitting here and you.
Because that's, that's, that's my job. I'm the liaison between the board and between the abutters and the applicant. The board is not to, to be discussing with neighbors or with abutters. That's not their, they're not allowed to do that by law.
Kathleen, can I just repeat that, because they're saying, or do you wanna repeat that, because they're saying they can't hear you?
Sorry. I was saying that to Laurie, Laurie sent an email that was sent to Danny, and she had many pieces of feedback in there. And that is how I came up with the signage question that I asked, was by reading Laurie's email and seeing Danny's response. And so, then I make a note to myself to ask a question about the signage. And so, that, I, I am reading your emails, but I am not directly emailing you.
Noted. The, the last item that I wanted to bring up, you also responded to, but I'm gonna bring it up anyway, and I already know the answer. Considering all of the valid disagreement and concern expressed by abutters and other nearby neighbors, can anyone at this table articulate the benefit of this project to the residents of our town?
I can articulate this. It's private property, Laurie.
That's what Danny said.
It, and that's a fact.
And I'm gonna just, let me just clarify on that as well. The planning board's job is not to see what is a benefit to the town and what is a benefit to the residents. Their job is to interpret the bylaws and the regulations, apply them. Does it meet it? Then it, then it works. It does it not, then it's, then it doesn't get approved. That is their, their job. Their job is not to give opinions on whether or not they like the project, whether they dislike the project, whether if it's, they think it's a benefit. That's not their responsibility.
Excuse me, I wanna say, if I could, Ken, you, you may have heard me say, language of benefit to the town or the people, and that's in context of waivers, because a waiver is, is a, is an asking for an exception from a bylaw or regulation that we have discretion over. And, and for that, to, 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 to get that discretion, they have to make an argument for it. But to build something that under the table of uses is allowed, that's their right. And we don't weigh in about whether it's good or bad or not. It's their right to come before us. And it's our job merely to say, does this fit within our regulations and, and laws? And if it doesn't, to say where, and to demand that it does.
Yeah, can I add one thing to that? So, I'd add to the comments that Danny made to say that the planning board looks at the drawings, but as we review the plans and looks at, and all the details that come in, we're making attempt to better the project during the process. So, we're not just looking at whether it complies with the law, we're taking the steps to try to improve the project as it goes through the process. So, the, an example of that could be, you know, asking for more landscaping, you know, whatever the number of things were.
Nathan's guardrail.
Does he matter? But we're simply looking. Looking at the application, we're looking at the plans, but in the same token, we're using our experience. Building things otherwise to try to make improvements in the plans that are submitted. So, to answer your question about the benefits of the town, I see a benefit to the town just by the planning board applying those thoughts and try to improve a project as it goes along. I'm not saying it benefits a person on a certain street, or it benefits a person in a certain neighborhood, but I believe the process has a series of benefits as part of its process. And those, that part of those process is looking at these things carefully. There's been some assumptions, I think, made that the planning board may not take the time to look at these things carefully. That is totally wrong. We're spending a lot of time carefully looking at these things, and we agree with most everything that anybody says as far as stormwater and other regulations. And in the last five years, we have put together way more regulations and made way more strict compliance requirements for any project that comes before us. So, that's my little comment. Thank you.
Chair, may I make two?
Yes, Nathan.
Because I would like to kindly disagree with, with Danny a little bit, I think, because, two points. One is, we do do things that are a benefit to the town, most notably, in our agenda tonight, we're going to propose zoning amendments. Most notably, in our agenda tonight, we're going to propose zoning amendments. And so we make recommendations that then eventually make it to town meeting to change the bylaws to what we believe to be in the town's benefit. So that's, and I say this often, I sit here with a 30 to 50-year outlook typically. And one of the things that we do to that end is make proposals for the, to the bylaw amendments. The other thing, I'll just echo what Ken said. Especially if you go back and look at McDonald's. When McDonald's came in and put in their two drive-throughs, we made a lot, Ken made a lot of recommendations. Sidewalks, curb cuts, signs that frankly applicants don't have to accept. But McDonald's did. And I think that's where you find there is some give and take, right? The applicant doesn't have to put a guardrail in. There's nothing requiring that. I think that we make a recommendation and we come to assent in our discussion, which is actually, you know, one of the things I enjoy about being here is making those recommendations.
Do you have thoughts about the question I just asked?
No, the only thing I do have a thought about is I, your one comment about wishing that we, because I felt like we did meet on site and talked for about an hour about it. So whenever you said that, I was like, hmm, maybe she didn't.
We did, but that, but the plans were already on paper at that time. And that's exactly what I said in my first letter.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, the on paper part is where you got me, sorry.
Okay, one more quick question.
Please.
If, on the map that says parking lot design?
Yep.
There are, on Webster Avenue, there are two lines. One is straight and one is the one that goes by the, well, they're both dashed.
Yes.
So you see them?
Yep.
So what is the difference between those two lines?
This is the edge of pavement.
And where, there is no pavement. Well, there's street.
That's what we call edge of pavement. It's where the, where that stops.
Okay, and so what's the other one?
And the other one is, I'm assuming is the right of way based on the land, the plan. I forget what the date is. Trying to find where plan is that we were just looking at. Yeah.
This one?
So many, yeah. So this is based on the, where the private way ends.
The top line?
Yes, this is the top line.
Private way ends.
Yeah, so actually. I'm sorry?
What's, I've got the plan right here.
We have a plan right in front of us.
I know it is.
The attorneys did already review it and they provided a letter. The building commissioner reviewed it and it's, it's a, this is the right of way for the private road, Webster Ave. Yes.
Where is it?
I believe it's in the project narrative. Or no.
I don't know.
In the application, maybe. The letter that the attorney provided. Oh, I will provide, I'll put that on the website. I don't know why it's not on there. Unless it's under here. I'll make sure, I'll make sure it's put up on the website.
What I don't understand though is the, the pri, the top line is the end of the private.
Yeah, so there's two, there's a private, this is the top and this is the bottom of the private way.
Right.
So if you, there's a plan right here that I can show you. So this is.
Oh yeah, I have this plan.
Yeah, so that's, that's it. It's based on that.
Those are the two lots that were broken off next to you. That's the plan of those two lots being broken off with a survey.
So what's the, what's the lower dashed line?
This one right here?
Yes.
That's the edge of pavement.
Edge of pavement.
Yes, it is. Yes. It's the edge of pavement. It's right there. Like I.
That maybe is the same thing as our property line? Actually, we're still working on that.
So if you want to look at your property line, you can see it right there.
Look, we, don't go, let her get the drawing from the registry.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't. I don't need the registry of deeds because I have it right here.
So it's based on that.
But I just wondered if it was the same.
This line right here just shows where the edge of pavement stops. So as you see, it follows that, where bows out right here and then goes into the wall. If you follow that here, follows along here, bows out and goes to the wall. The GIS don't, don't ever believe property lines on GIS. They're not exact, they're not supposed to be exact. Yes, this one. They're never supposed to be exact.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments on Zoom?
There's still more public, in person.
Nothing on Zoom. Can I just, can we make sure to keep the comments to something that hasn't already been said? Because we have a lot of other, a lot of other things that we have to get through.
I'll do the best I can, thank you.
Thank you.
By Highland Avenue. I appreciate that. This is a really important project, obviously, that's why we're here.
They're all important projects.
Yes, with long-term impact. This map that I'm glad you still have up, this view.
Yep.
Couple of questions on that. And let's see, you're still here, good. So the cars that are parked there right now, when they pull out, they are pulling into a road, Webster Avenue.
It's private. It's not public.
They're still having to pull out if that new parking lot gets built. Lots of cars could be back there, particularly when they have events. And I would think the same rule would apply to both sides of the building.
As much as I would love that, but it's not, it's a private road. It's, the town has no ownership over it. We don't govern what they can and cannot do on that. Here on, I don't know what just happened. I don't know what just happened, sorry. This down here, this is a public road. So at that point, we do govern what does and does not happen.
Could that public road that we're now looking at, meaning the top of High Street, be extended? I'm looking at High Street.
This one?
Going to the right?
Yep.
And that could then accommodate the trucks that need to deliver. Is there a reason why we can't expand that part of the road instead of building a new parking lot and then keep the cars where they are?
This is, so this is being built out to continue and then it eventually will lead into Lincoln Hill.
The Lincoln Hill roadway, the entryway is actually halfway through, roughly ahead of where the garbage dumpsters are right now.
Oh, you're talking about like extend this all the way out?
Yes.
Yeah, so that drops off down there. There's a huge drop off.
They're already doing.
If you look at that.
Chair. They're already doing a lot of raising and filling, so I don't see that that's so much different. When I look at this and I stand in this area, it appears to me that the first portion of the parking lot closest to Winthrop Avenue could maintain at least eight or nine cars. Eight, yes, right there. It does not interfere with the exit of the new street that's being proposed. Deliveries could happen if an extension was put onto High Street. So I do think that there's an alternative for some parking at least to stay there. And I'd like to suggest that. So I want to go back to what Lynn Shaw, my neighbor, said regarding the other end of the new Webster Avenue, the private way. As a neighbor, I do see people walking the street and elderly persons. I saw one just before this meeting, actually. And they do hang out at that corner. And I, on behalf of the safety issues, I'm very concerned about people pulling out quickly before and after shift. They're running late. Emergency vehicles coming in, people congregating there. We're encouraging a lot more traffic where the people hang out. They really don't have other places and that is the only entrance and exit that they use. As you know, they do not use the front of the building because that's protected for various reasons on the inside of the building. And I'll also add that I'm very disappointed that VOA and Neshoba Park have not been here to represent themselves. So, safety issues. I wonder if we might be able to call on the.
No, actually, I'm going to close this because we have other items on the agenda and we're going in circles over the same material over and over again.
Okay, then I'm going to talk about some other issues that are on my mind and I need you to listen. This is important. Could you please go back to the picture of the parking lot that shows the gardens, bio-retention areas? I'm sorry, the bio-retention area. And the last one that I saw also has some stones for overflow. That's the one I'm most interested in. Do you have that one?
This one?
No, there's another one that was updated after this one.
Oh, the detail sheet. Shows the riprap.
There we go, that's the one. Okay, so the parking lot is 100 feet by night, by 66 feet. And the design here is meant to catch the runoff from water. And I'm now understanding that the bio-retention area is a rain garden. I understand how rain gardens are supposed to work. And I understand that you have a plant design that's going to be coming. So I, because this is now going to be part of their open space and their plan, I would ask that this. Not the parking lot, but around it.
Not this area. The line, so it's actually going to be. So you see this proposed line right here? That's what the A and R line, that's going to be the A and R lot that's going to be created.
Okay, this is my question.
Yep.
I would feel, I would like to ask if the planning board could authorize a review, a peer review, along with other things that a proponent is going to be, that a company is going to be reviewing to ensure that this parking lot is designed and the bio-retention area is designed. And here's my concern. I'm thinking about the rain we had this weekend and I believe this is designed for a one-inch flush? Okay. We had a lot more than one inch just this weekend. And I believe that the water's going to run off and over the bio-retention basin, run down the stones, and then I don't know what happens to it after that. So I'm picturing lots of water that overflows beyond the stones. It's running down the cliff toward the new development. It's running into, I'm not really sure where, but it seems to me it's going to turn into groundwater. It's not going to become surface water, I don't think, because it's going to be filled with all this ground stone that contains calcium that could easily wash through and end up outside of the whole stormwater retention basin and causing a fair amount of environmental problems. And I itemized this in a letter that I sent to you a couple of days ago.
Just quickly, so the plan, this was already reviewed by the town engineer. And he was okay with this. The only, except, the only thing that did come up in my discussion with him was making sure that a test pit is done as prior to, as a condition of approval as prior to any site work happening in terms of where the stormwater occurs. So when that overflows, which is what this overflow spillway does, it then will go into, over to the Lincoln Hills project, which this Lincoln Hill project had already accommodated the stormwater for this area. So it was already incorporated into their stormwater report, into their stormwater calculations. So it's not going to have any change on that.
That's what I'd like somebody to peer review.
That's, that's what the stormwater.
We have that, we already have a stormwater review.
This, this part has not been reviewed.
So the, if you look at the comments, the peer reviewer did look at and provide comments regarding this.
Regarding the parking lot?
Yeah. One of his comments, if you look at it, was, was the test pit regarding this. And to add the riprap.
Okay, I would also appreciate a comment at a later point about my concern about the calcium and changing the ecology. Okay.
Calcium, what do you mean by calcium?
So last. At the last meeting, it was described that in order to do the pulverization of the rock.
That's a different project. We'll talk about it with a different project.
There will be calcium added, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yep. No, we gotta, we gotta let the comments go.
At other open meeting laws, we've talked about timing.
Yeah, we can.
How many minutes we offer. Is that something we need to say now?
So for right now, I think we'll, if there's, as long as we're not repeating any more comments. And then at the next meet, because Lincoln Hill is going to be the one that's probably going to be, we're going to have to keep it very succinct.
Come up.
Yep, I see it, thank you.
Evening, that's at Meyer Nashua Street. Thank you for taking some additional comments. The question came up about whether or not portions of this property are contributing to the open space area. Right now, the like yellow and green map looks like it's a very tight, neat rectangle. It doesn't look like it's jogging to show the. It's the open space, space map that was, you know, available in the resources online.
You're, oh, you're talking about, oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So it's very rectangular. It doesn't seem to show the jog that you were just showing.
So on this, so that's an old plan. On the updated site plans, it's shown properly.
Okay, sorry about that. I feel like there's more effort that could be made to reduce the impact to existing vegetation and trees here. For example, they're proposing to clear a bunch of vegetation that's between the parking lot and the adjacent home. You know, the home and their shed and things like that, the backyard where the kids play is quite close. They're proposing to, I think, maybe clear some land and put arbor byde in rather than retain existing vegetation and complement that. You know, you've got a very, very linear arbor byde proposal there. You could do a lot of staggered plantings that would look much more organic, nicer, and be, you know, biologically more enhancing the property and also complementing the existing vegetation that's there. There's, you know, it's really close when you're there. It feels very close and there's a lot that's there. And I think even just proposing the snow storage over that entire area sort of implies that you're clearing it. And, and I just really want to be careful about this. When it's not a heavy lift, to try and really identify where there's existing vegetation that you want to protect. And we don't, I think, have, you know, the existing standing trees mapped. The same for the bio-retention area. What is the steepness of the slope there?
Contours are on there.
Yeah, yeah, can you just let me know?
361, 360, 359.
Did a two to one?
Are you asking for proposed or existing?
Proposed. Because it's very steep there now and it would really be ideal if you could tighten things up and not impact the existing slopes. You know, I'm really trying to protect existing standing vegetation and existing steep slopes. So I'm just wondering what the proposed slope is there and whether or not any other. Okay. I also would like just clarification on the catchment area of the drainage that'll be going to this bio-retention area. Is it, is it anything coming from the existing impervious area?
No, it does come from further up towards the north area and the abutting property. All of that water does flow through. Up, up on the abutting lots.
So abutting lots will drain to this bio-retention area? And that's all been factored in?
Yep.
And there's no need for a four bay or anything like that? It's, you're getting your treatment through the rain garden. And I am also concerned about, you know, the overflow in storm events, but it has been peer reviewed and everything, okay. The tree preservation question, you know, again, the only proposal for vegetation plantings to mitigate the loss of the vegetation over this whole site is those arbor byde. You haven't provided anything in the way of screening for the residents behind, you know, behind the building itself. If you're, you're, you know, going to be clearing there, if, you know, like, if there could be room for any screening there, you know, it's.
There's a buffer of trees. There is a buffer of trees between the parking lot and the.
Okay, that'll be on the.
It's all pretty wood. There's like a five-foot area that you can kind of walk along if you go back there.
Right, right.
Most of this is all.
But it seems like right near the driveway, proposing some vegetation there to shade the parking places, to shade the sidewalk. You know, that area would really be nice.
We're getting a little granular here with this.
It, they've proposed arbor byde and I think that that's a little bit limiting.
It's a parking lot.
It is a limit, so parking lots really need shade. It's really important. Sorry for the granularization. for the granulari, granularization. The questions that are coming up about the private driveway, I think that the letter from the council would be really, really helpful, because, I mean, it's my understanding that we have private air residents that own the private driveway, right?
The private ways, the way they work in Massachusetts is you own to the center of the private way, unless you outright own the private way.
You mean, just because it's broken up by multiple owners means that they only open to the central line, even when their plans show that they...
That's state law.
Even their plans show that they show, they...
So, no, no, no. The plan don't show that.
Plan doesn't show that.
G.I.S. shows that.
No, no. I'm sorry. I was just looking at the deeds.
But, so, the, the, the deed that is on the, the plan that's on the registry of deeds does not show that. And we were just looking at that.
Did Lori notice?
Lori, we were just discussing that with Lori.
Right, yeah. I just saw hers.
Yeah. And we're looking at that right there. So, that's a private way you own to the center of, if you're in a land law. That's Massachusetts law.
Regardless of what their plans is?
Regardless of what?
Of what their plans say.
It's Massachusetts law.
Okay.
That's, that's all.
Okay. Again, the comment has been made that when public comments are made and there's silence, it's, it's intended to mean that the board disagrees with the comments, because...
No, it just means no comment.
But I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just trying, we're, we're trying to understand where the comments go.
Which comments?
So Kathleen...
For example, the trees and the, yeah.
Kathleen shared earlier that we work them into the questions we ask when we have them, and we work them into the conversation that we have. So, often the silence, I won't speak for them, but speaks for myself, that it's been addressed somewhere in this meeting, and that we feel we're grateful and we give the time as best we can, because it's really important, you know, we work together frequently, to hear what you all are saying. But the silence comes from it's been addressed somewhere in here, or we've taken it to a question at a different time.
So, we're, so comments about vegetation and slope are...
They've been heard the applicant, and they can make it, they can incorporate that in their, their planning, yes. Because you're talking about discretionary issues at this point.
But the board could say, we agree.
I, I will say I agree. So, I didn't bring it up, but you made a point about the arborvitae and that additional vegetation, and your point about the snow storage on the map looks like it being clear. So, I did not say that I agree or that I intend to do anything about it, but the thinking inside my head was that this is not the first conversation that will happen about the, the VOA, and they're going to revise additional plans, and they're going to provide landscaping detail. And so, at that point, I made a note to myself that I will bring up, and if they don't change from arborvitae, I might say, hey, would you consider adding additional plantings there?
Thank you very much. Because it feels like we're, we're often speaking into a void, and we don't understand.
I mean, I, I, I would say, I'm pretty sure I had a very eloquent conversation with Lori just, you know, a few minutes before. Yes, some of your comments I'm not speaking to because I may not agree with them, but do you want me to just outright say I don't agree with you? I, I, like, I don't know what you want me, I don't know what you want to hear from me.
I, I just think acknowledgement is nice, and that will, even if it's just we'll take it into consideration, or, you know, that, that, yes, we, we also would like the applicant to look into that. It goes a long way. I'm, I'm really trying to help the process. I don't mean to be critical. I'm trying to help the process, and I'm understanding how frustrated some people are.
May I, may I for one second, could I try one comment back to my friend and fellow board member? I hear that loud and clear, and I know we share chairs on other boards. So, I, and I'm going to use that as a dialogue for everyone. I'm not just talking to you, Beth. I, I think, I, I will speak for me, but sometimes it feels the same way sitting in this seat, that we are shouting into the void of all the hard work we put in, and to reading these plans, to the amount of notes, to the amount of time, to the amount of emails, and I promise you, we have read them, and I have illustrations, and my family has seen them. So, the, the feelings go both ways, and you know how hard, and these conversations are so fruitful at times. There's nuggets that become very important to the project. Lori, I'm looking, actually, both, Lori, I, there are times it becomes wonderful and important. And so, we are there, we continue to hear it, and we continue to give time, but we cannot continue to answer every time, or we are going to be here till tomorrow, and I am not signed up for that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone's time and the hard work that's going into this.
Thank you.
Can I make just one comment on the vegetation, just very quickly?
Yep.
The bio-retention area, we have a lot of vegetation, and I, I think that is really going to make that part of it look pretty good. The north side is really screening, and the purpose of that is for screening, and also to leave area for snow storage. So, those are two different reasons, and that's how it's designed, so.
Yes, Kathleen.
A question for the chair. Is it worth having a planning board do a site walk specific to the VOA? We did a site walk. We only looked at the Lincoln Hills...
Flower, please.
Oh, you want to pull the mic to you?
Oh, sorry. I asked the question of if it was worth doing a dedicated site walk to the VOA, where the parking lot was staked, where you could stake out the arborvitae, you could stake out the bio-retention center. The reason I bring this up is because when the planning board did a site walk, we did not concentrate at all on that property, because the VOA property was not, or, sorry, the VOA application was not before the board. So, I, I would like to request that the chair requests to the applicant that we have the ability to do this site walk, but specifically, I would ask that the parking lot be staked, that arborvitae line be staked, and then the bio-retention area be kind of demarcated somehow.
I've been up there, but I don't know again. I'm, whatever the board wants.
I, I know. I'm gone for two weeks, so I apologize.
What do you guys think?
Perhaps we can revisit in October.
Personally, I do, do not want to have one, and I, it's because the applicant took extra time to do a personal site visit for me, which is above and beyond what they are asked to do, because I missed the first one, and so the parking lot was already in my site walk. And I thank you for taking that time, and I do not need that, but I will join it if that is what is asked of the board.
I'm open to the board. I've done it as well, but...
I did it.
So, maybe I need a personal site walk?
I can, I can take you up there.
Okay, so, let's do that.
Yeah.
I, I specifically do want to see those, those three things.
And I'm not opposed to switching things a little bit, like with the arborvitae's, or like, as the project present, you know, I even, I've talked to the neighbors out on site that are the abutters, and we've talked about, like, could you please keep, I've already had these conversations with them, and completely open, open to, you know, doing the best we can to make, to be, you know.
I'm going to call three-minute recess. I need a break for a second, and we'll be right back, two minutes after the, three minutes after the hour. We are resuming. We have a full complement. I believe we have a comment from Zoom. Is that Pauline?
Pauline.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think offline Danny may, may have answered my question, but we are still discussing the public hearing on Zero Winthrop Ave.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, you made a comment about when Ms. Sable was talking, that you're going to close this, but you didn't mean close the hearing?
No, 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 just to move forward.
All right, great. So, you're going to...
We're not closing the hearing. No.
You're going to continue it. That was really just my procedural question.
My, and, my bad, you're correct. Yes.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm not criticizing. I just wanted to be clear. But thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make the motion?
Okay, great. So, can I have a motion for continuance for Zero Winthrop?
So, the next meeting is September 23rd.
I'll make a motion. I move that we continue the public hearing for Zero Winthrop Ave and Urea VOA Parking Lot Site Plan Review to our next Planning Board meeting on September 23rd.
I can do it.
Any further comment, discussion? Yes, sir.
So, what would be our expectation, Danny, at the, the next meeting?
So, my intent would be to have a decision, a draft for, for the board to look at, be able to vote on findings, any waivers that are requested, like we typically do.
Okay, thank you.
I anticipate any waivers.
Great.
Just procedurally, yeah.
Yep. Okay, good. Any further? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye, with the continuance.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. The, the hearing is continued. That brings us to Zero High Street and 38 Groton Harvard Road. The site plan review, and, and this discussion will be limited to the landscape plan, lighting plan, and the waiver list request. And we're going to start with a presentation. We're going to ask the applicant to lead us through the landscape plan. I don't anticipate this will be very long. I think it's pretty simple.
Let me just give an update as to where we are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm just so late in the evening. Please do give us an update.
I'm sorry. So, the, at the last meeting, we intended on getting through landscaping and lighting as well. We did not get the chance to. The blasting discussion did occur, take a little bit longer than we anticipated. So, we did finish the discussion of blasting. Now, the intent for this meeting would be landscaping, lighting, and the waiver list, and for the next meeting would be stormwater. The peer reviewer did provide their third review comment letter that has been sent over to the applicant to review. And so, what the intent would be is to have the peer reviewer come to the next meeting in September to review the comments. Hopefully, by then, the applicant will have addressed all of those comments, and if, at that point, the peer reviewer is satisfied, we would be able to kind of finish out the stormwater peer review. The, so for this meeting, for landscaping, we'll go through the revised landscape plans, which were, there were some comments from Heather that the applicant did revise regarding native species around the, the houses and the units. The lighting plan shows for the four lamps, the four poles, and, and then the waiver request, so that we can make a formal vote on those. And then, because those are going to make the rest of the, that's, some of the project is contingent on those waivers.
Okay, great.
And just so that everyone knows as well, currently, the project is proposed as 34 units. There are 30 single-family houses, two duplexes, which is a total of 34 units. Just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. 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 Okay.
And as part of the HOA, I'm sure when the condominium docks and all that get written up, it'll be required that the maintenance will be in there. And so, as part of our decision, one of the conditions would be that the condominium docks would be transferred over, would be submitted to us before they get recorded where I would review it and to ensure that all of, any conditions that we set forth in the decision would be incorporated into that condominium to document.
Great. My board colleagues have comments or questions. Yes, Kathleen? Louder.
Specifically, my question is about the open space, but I didn't know if this applies. So, when the Conservation Commission came before us and gave their findings at the very beginning, they called out specifically that in the open space, there were a number of invasive species and that those should be mitigated or taken care of. Is that part of the landscape plan or is that going to fall under something else?
So, invasive removal is not something we can require, we can ask for. I believe as part of the discussion, I'll have Heather speak on this one because this one's a little bit more in her wheelhouse.
I mean, I do the record, so it's fine. So, in regards to those, those comments as far as invasive species go, those invasive species actually run through the existing driveway that comes off of High Street. That's where the, the highest concentration of they were. I think there are autumn olive in there. So, when they go through and do this construction, they're actually going to clear all that out.
Oh, perfect.
So, the majority of the invasives were in the already disturbed areas, which is where the existing house was and that roadway, which is where the construction is proposed now, which is when you looked at that conservation analysis. That's why they put the, that's part of, part of their reasoning for putting the construction in that area because it would remove those invasive species that are located on the site.
Thank you, Heather.
You're very welcome.
Any other board comments?
Is there a detail up there on the depth of the lumen seed on the areas that don't get planted?
That is part of.
Oh, it's part of the actual site plan.
Erosion control is to make sure anywhere is certainly seeded and loomed and seeded. That's not on, that's not on the landscaping plan. There's a whole issues about.
Oh, let me, let me zoom in.
The type of seed you're going to use. Usually, we have.
Okay.
Yep.
Areas over the two-to-one slope shall be protected with erosion.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Ken?
What's the specific, are you going to specify the seed mix? Is that it somewhere? So, just a lawn mix?
Let me see.
Either way, you've got.
Yes, it's Kentucky bluegrass right there. Yep.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, it's right here. Lawn area mix.
Okay, now I see it, yep.
Okay, there we go.
With the EY.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Does the public have any questions regarding the landscape plan? Yes, please, come on up.
Jacob Cozera, 30 Groton Harvard. Can we bring up the map? There was a section that looks like a parking, but it used to be like in the bottom there that that's where the snow removal site was going to be. Is that still the snow, the snow storage site? Is that now back over there? Where, where did it move to?
They just removed it.
So, where are they going to put the snow?
They have other areas on the site plan.
Well, just because the landscaping plan, if they do put snow there, then I would ask for a screening of trees in that area where there are no trees in the landscaping plan.
Oh, okay, I see, I see your question.
You know, because then you can just push it right over the ledge there. Not that, that would be the plan or the intent of the HOA, but I'm driving a tow truck, I'm driving a plow truck in the winter. Snow goes places.
Putting up signs on both sides of that parking lot saying, "No snow storage."
Yeah, so you're talking about this area right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, I would, just because it's a, it, it's just like the one blank spot on that landscaping plan. So, it just concerns me there's no trees there because you throw some trees there, then you can not push snow over even if people don't, because they may or may not read signs on that type of thing, just to be realistic. And that goes, and that misses the basin.
Yeah. So. Is, is, you could probably put some log.
Oh, that's the issue, the retaining walls right there.
There's some.
That's the three-to-one slope right there.
Okay, good, yeah.
But.
We are putting a sign there and we are putting guardrails there. Those are on the revised plans.
The guardrail.
Yeah, we spoke to Matt about that.
Yes, the guardrail is shown on this.
Guardrail would be hard to push through.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room? Come on up.
Sorry, so the answer is there's going to be a guardrail there.
Yeah, there's a guardrail there. And there's going to be signs regarding, "No snow storage there."
My name is Peter Leonard. I live at 50 Cambridge Street. And I just had a question if you could just scroll up slightly or the other way, yeah. There's three trees, so there's, that horseshoe there is a continuation of Williams Street and then Cambridge Street, but it's, it's just a paper road right now. And the question I had was.
Oh, you're talking about up here?
Yeah, yeah, town property, town paper road, I guess.
Yeah.
The question I had is developers in the town, is there's a way to kind of dissuade, residents up here from trespassing or cutting through onto those kind of paper streets, onto Williams Street, down to Cambridge Street. There's no delineation for town property, private property. It's just kind of natural human behavior to get downtown, cut through those. There's kind of just three trees separating those, those houses and the development and just, you know, human nature to go down there and try to find the shortest path downtown.
You're talking about this area right down here or up here?
Kind of the, the U right there. And then, there's three, three large trees that are kind of just the only kind of blocking area for the development, for people to kind of just migrate down the hill.
That's a very steep slope right there. I really doubt there's going to be people, I mean, you may have some kids that'll want to go back there. There's just, I don't, I don't know if there's a way that we can condition something that would stop people from going that way.
Yeah, it is troublesome, but I do, I do find occasionally, you know, some residents will kind of make their way down through those paper roads just as a shortcut. It's, it's usually not a nuisance, but when you're adding, you know, that many units, just people will want to take the shortest path. And they do, they do go down the slopes and a few people will wear a path into the forest and then it'll become a cut, cut through. So, that's, that's my concern if there's a way for the town on, on their end to kind of put some kind of barrier or dissuasion signage for the developer to kind of incorporate ways to kind of dissuade the residents from cutting through that area.
Maybe there's some signage we could, like, private property past this point? I don't.
Can you put the G.I. S.
Yeah, I mean, it's the town and it's.
It's the town, so.
It's a mixed bag, so.
I think they're coming down the paper street that's the extension of.
Down here.
They're coming down the extension.
Yeah, it's going to load. Hold on one second.
Yeah, there's a, there's Norwood, the Norwood Ave that goes up.
This one right here? So, this is, this is the area that was shown on the plan, right up here?
Yeah, yeah.
The extension of Winthrop is where they're coming through right now.
Right here?
It's like a.
Yeah, there's little, there's little cow paths through there. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything we can do because it's, it is technically. Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything that the town can do like to enforce, you can't walk there.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's tough.
Even is, is making it some, some type of a turnoff. I know it's, it's tough to enforce just like open forest land, but.
Yeah.
After it's, after it's put in to kind of maybe delineate somehow or some way to, to try to keep people on the, maintain roads. That's, that was my only comment for that.
I'll, I'll see what, I'll look into that. I don't, I don't know if there's anything I can do, but I'll look into it for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any comments online?
I think that, was there anyone else?
Anyone else? Beth?
No one on Zoom yet.
No one on Zoom?
So, it's a, it's a familiar comment from me, but just really thinking about existing. Sorry. Just thinking about existing mature trees. And, you know, our regulations for the open space required that the trees would have been shown on the plan. I don't think that that has ever come to fruition and it would have been really informative to have that, you know, in those early days of conversation about selecting the developable area versus the conservation area. But now that we are at this point, I think that, you know, there's, there's such an incredible amount of grading that's happening here, but there are some edge areas where if we could have existing trees mapped and a significant effort to protect mature existing trees, it really, really, really enhances an area. And, and again, because there is, you know, the open space consideration for this project, you know, I, you know, we've gone to great extents, you know, in projects that I've worked on to protect trees, including, you know, like constructing retaining walls around them so that their root zones aren't disturbed and things like that. You know, it, it just makes such a finer development and living experience. The other thing that I'm really noticing on the plans is that there's hardly any lawn areas that are, are quite flat. You know, you've got, you've got a lot of ditches, ditches between homes and things like that. And I just didn't know if you had thought about, you know, like amenities for the community because these residents are, you know, up on, well, I mean, the, the site is going to be so manipulated, but there's really not going to be a lot of like place to play. You know, like, there's, there are smaller lots, their lawns are not flat. And so, I just didn't know if you had thought about little pocket areas for gathering places and things like that, you know, just again, in the entrance, interests of, you know, these residents. And, you know, they're going to be surrounded by, you know, like steep drop offs. And, and, you know, I know that there, we really hoped that there would be some trail connectivity and things like that. I understand it's controversial, but I don't know if a decision has been made about whether or not there would be a trail that would go through this development, be able to connect to Groton Harvard Road. It is, you know, it's, it's an important connection, I think, from community dynamics and movement. And, you know, there's, again, I know, I know that it, you know, that there's strong feelings, you know, about that. But when we have an open space designated area, you know, the preservation of that space without disturbance and then access to that space, I think is an important consideration. Again, I do wear the hat as an open space and recreation plan committee member, so.
Thank you.
I just will say, like, the discussion was had, the, it seemed like the, the most of the feedback was that there was opposition to having some sort of a trail and a pocket park. So, that's why the direction, they did not go in that direction.
We did discuss last meeting that the deed and right-of-way from the going down to Groton Harvard Road will be mowed regularly.
Do we have a comment online?
The deed right-of-way down to Groton Harvard Road will be mowed. The easement will be maintained.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's not a right-of, yeah, it's the easement, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, just to address one of Beth's comments in regards to saving mature trees along the trail, the property edge. Typically, Danny and I will do a pre-construction meeting where we go out and inspect the erosion controls that are done on site. And typically, at that point, when we're out there, because clearing hasn't been done on site yet, we'll make those questions and comments to see if we can save any trees on site with the contractors that are out there. And we tend to do those on the, on the fly once we're out on site and able to do that once the limit of work has been determined. So, that's, so it might not be shown on the plan, it might be a discussion here, but it is a discussion that happens on site once we're starting the construction phase. And that happens on every project that we do in town.
And, and the reason for that is it's difficult to show all the trees along that line and the limit of work and what you can and cannot save because when you're in the field, that's where you can kind of go around whatever trees you can try to save and what, that's, that's typically why we wait until that point.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mike.
So, we as a board ask for the limit of work to be identified by the engineer. They show us the limit of work, but what you're basically saying is professionals from the town, you and Heather, will go out when they install that perimeter, a limit of work, and make an attempt to save trees that would not interfere with the construction of the project.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, we may show it as a straight line on the plane, but in reality, it could have a curve. It could avoid something.
Yes, exactly.
All right, thanks.
Is there someone on Zoom?
Not see anyone on Zoom.
Yep, coming up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Christine Goulet, 15 Deer Run. As I've said every time I've come to the board to speak, I'm concerned about the forest that's being cut down. My question to the planning board is in the, I've, you know, I've lived in Air for going on almost 13 years. I'm not proud to say that I'm a resident of Pingree Hill. Every day, I drive up that hill and I cry for the forest that was lost. And I feel ashamed, I feel ashamed that I purchased a home in that development. If I had known, I wouldn't be here right now, probably at this table. So, my question to the planning board, you are here for the people of Air, not just for people looking to develop this town. How many acres have been destroyed in the last 15 years in this town? I want you to think about that and I would like an answer to that. How many acres have been cut down to build? And to follow up on that question, I also want to know how many acres have been preserved in this town? Because these are key questions that we need to be, really be thinking as we face a biodiversity crisis and we face climate change. Developments aren't always about progress, it's about doing good. And to me, I have a moral obligation each and every day of my life, moral obligation, to make good. So, yes, it is private property, but you also have an obligation to the greater good and the community. So, I respectfully ask the town of Air to return, return to the table and discuss purchasing this land and preserving it for the good of all futures. I know we've spent an enormous amount of time and I value each and everything that you have done, but there are so many people who've come forward and knowing what we have known and knowing what the town has done, what has done to Pingree Hill, what has done, I'm blanking, the pond. Please help, help me.
Stratton Hill?
Stratton Hill.
Can I?
Okay.
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, I don't, I know, I just want to say, okay, I just want to say this. We can't keep making the same mistakes. Yes, there are bylaws and we've got to change those things, but we've got to look to the future and we've got to maybe in good faith, go back to the drawing board and see if we can make this right. And again, so that we can make more acres preserved in this town than more acres gone. Massachusetts is getting ready to present their swap. Critical habitat, looking to preserve acres in this state to meet the 40%. And wouldn't it be awesome if Air itself saved over 50%, 40% of its town? That's all my concerns and I don't expect an answer on that. I'm just speaking as, as a concerned citizen for the future of, of my children. And I'm a teacher, so I fight every day for my students. And that's all, that's all, that's all. We're just, we have to say, again, like I say, I have a moral obligation to speak each and every day and I couldn't live without, live with myself unless I say these things tonight. So, with that, I do close. So, thank you.
Just to touch on a couple of those things. So, specifically Stratton Hill. Stratton Hill just is preserving 140 acres of open space. The planning board, in discussions with the applicant, after over a year of discussions back and forth, we managed to have the applicant provide 140 acres of open space as opposed to what the original proposal was. So, I feel like the board as a whole has been doing just what you asked to try and propose as much open space and preserve as much open space in the town as we can. Our open space bylaw, that is the whole reasoning behind why that was put in. 50% of any of the project has to be preserved as open space. And we've done this on four other projects at this point. So, when you add up all of that, we are preserving more than we are developing. And that's the whole intent behind these bylaws.
Thank you. Are there any comments specific to the landscape plan? Is this about the landscape plan, sir? Then come on up.
Norman Buck, 58 Central. The access road to the retention pond for maintenance, you've got a lot of trees. Will, will that block vehicle access and ability to get down there and turn stuff around? We want to make sure that they can maintain and keep it functional.
So, there's a turnaround up here past the trees?
Yeah.
So, they should be, they'll be able to make that turn back.
Okay, it's a, the, the trees just look like they overwrapped the road. That's, I just want to make sure there's actual clearance.
Yeah, that's just how, like, when they grow tall and they grow out, that's how wide.
Okay, just want to make sure that there's actual.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. No one online?
Um, no one online.
Let's move to the lighting plan. You want to set us up on?
Yes, let me just. All right, so this is the photometrics plan. And on this one, this is, you can see there are four light poles shown on the plan. Might be a little difficult to see up here, but there's a blue lines right here, so that's one. Here's another one at the corner of Nicholas Lane and Matthew Lane. Another one midway through Adam Lane. through Adam Lane, and one right at the intersection of High Street and Adam Lane. So there's really four, only four, um, light poles, which is, you know, what we kind of requested to keep it min, very minimal, and I figure, and I think what we had discussed previously was, most of these houses will have some sort of a small outdoor light out front, and that would be what serves these houses as for front lighting.
So if I understand it correctly, the, the idea of the plan is to be as simple as possible, that you want enough light for safety, but not so much that it compromises the environment or, or the, um, or the integrity of other properties, so that the experience, right?
That is correct.
And that's why there's only four lights, right?
Right.
Okay. Did you want to say anything about it and beyond that, or?
I think it just covers the major intersection points, that was the idea.
Yeah, just so that you can get your sense of direction at night time.
Right. Does, does our board have any questions regarding the plan?
No. Uh, that's been changed. It's been moved from there to where the other light is, right, uh, that one, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
It'll be right under the light?
Yeah, and, and actually, there's a, a little place you can pull off the road so that the, the postman can, um, stop without.
Shown right here, I'll zoom in on this.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, there we go. That's where the light is shown right there.
Yeah, and actually, the size of that kiosk is, was thought for the 60 units, it's going to be reduced somewhat, for 30, for 34 houses, so.
Hearing no, no questions or comments on the board, anyone in the room have any questions or comments regarding the lighting plan? Norman, come on up.
You mentioned front lighting on these, are, will there be any backyard lighting on these units?
I'm sure, yeah, I think by code, they have to have a backyard lighting.
Okay, I just look at, I'm a butter downhill from this, I'm worried about light spread into my backyard, and I know people on Groton Harvard will have same issues.
Yeah, I, I think by code, you have to have a light on the back of the houses.
But they're sheeted.
Um, yeah, I mean, we could put.
But they're downward.
They're downward, but I am way down from there, so if you look at 12 and 13, even a downward pointing light is in my backyard.
Well, Norman, when, when those houses are built, I invite you to come up and we'll look at the lighting, and if it's bothering you, maybe we can put a different type of fixture, or truly before anybody buys it or moves in, we'll look at it.
Yeah, we can look at that, and you have people on the other side with the same people on Groton Harvard who have similar issues. That's something, just take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have comment or question on the lighting plan? Anyone online?
Nope.
Okay, I think we can move forward then to the waiver list. There it is. Yep. All right, you want to lead us through?
Yes, so there.
That's a Maki Rubin letter, right?
Yeah. Um, so the applicant has four waiver requests on here, but I believe in discussion with the applicant, the number two, the bicycle parking will be, um, put on the site, so that, that waiver is no longer required. So the first one is the sidewalk location. The sidewalk is designed adjacent to the main road as opposed to, uh, providing a continuous landscaped strip no less than four feet wide between the sidewalk and the main road. In this tight layout of units, the landscaped front yard are considered more value, um, than to the homeowner than a landscaped strip, uh, would be to a pedestrian. As stated in the bylaws, the, uh, planning board may approve a reduction in the width of the landscaped strip in order to accommodate landscaping, landscaping within the front yard. A four-foot strip is difficult enough to maintain and anything less than four feet becomes of little value and hence requests a note, uh, of no strip. So basically, what this is just requesting is, as opposed to having the, the grass in front of the, um, between the granite, um, the granite curbing, the, the curbing in general, and the sidewalk, the sidewalk abuts the, the curbing, and then that strip of grass is behind it. And I agree on this one, um, it is a more condensed site, so to provide the, the grass on the other, this, on the side of where the, um, the house is, is, is a better use of that grass strip. We are provide, they also are providing with the, um, you know, with street trees and all of that, which you typically wouldn't want along the front of the sidewalk, because then it, it's a much diff, more difficult, uh, maintenance, so having it on the backside of the, uh, strip of the, the sidewalk is, is a better.
It's an easier way to maintain it, so, um, in my opinion, for this waiver, it's, uh, I think it's a good waiver.
Colleagues?
So Danny, just for clarification, this, this falls under landscaping and lighting requirements of the bylaw, I believe, right?
Yes, section 9.17 C2.
9.17, actually, it's, it's my mistake, it's pedestrian accommodation, section 917.
Yeah.
Then C sidewalks. We typically run into this on a commercial project.
Yes.
More than we would on a condominium project. In fact, I don't remember ever having this come up before.
Oh, well, so we actually just did this on Panther Place. Theirs was actually shifted.
Right, that's, that was subdivision regulation.
Yes.
This is under the zoning under.
Yes, because this is not a subdivision, correct.
So I mean, I think it makes sense, I'd rather have the lawn and worry about that strip, you know, deteriorating and whatnot.
Any other comments? Comments?
Public comment?
Any, any comment from the public regarding this waiver? Yes, Lori?
Uh, this will be quick, um, I was wondering how wide the sidewalk will be and if it'll be made of, out of concrete or asphalt, or something else?
The, the sidewalk is asphalt and it's five feet wide.
Glad that it's wider, that's good, because I was concerned about safety issues with it being so close. Um, is it possible to have it concrete instead, or is there a reason why it's asphalt?
Haven't I, Michael, Michael Field, um, having a concrete sidewalk with the salt that gets put down nowadays on pretreatments and during winter storms, the salt will deteriorate the concrete.
The asphalt will hold up better over time?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to look up sidewalks better, but I understand that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, you had a comment?
Interestingly enough, in another meeting that I was attending, um, we heard from people who use wheelchairs, and they talked a lot about the joints and construct, and concrete sidewalks being a detriment as they go down, and the other thing is that those joints are designed to expand and contract, so you actually have a tendency to create a higher joint in the long run. The vituminous has a tendency to float more and stays in place better in this particular application. Concrete typically a bigger industrial, commercial project, something like that, but the curves in the road and the, and the turns, this is, asphalt definitely works better here.
Is there anyone online?
In my opinion.
On Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Uh, we can make a motion then, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the waiver for the, uh, four-foot strip requirement for the sidewalk location in reference to 9.17 C2 of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen? Nathan?
Aye.
Julie? Chair votes aye. Uh, number two, the bicycle parking is no longer, is moot, they're going to put the bicycle rack in. Number three, the existing trees are 12 inches in diameter.
Yes, a waiver is requested on the basis that the development, developed area is compact and little option for modification where drainage, utility easements is located within the open space, larger trees were located and shown on plan, further adjacent, adjustments may be considered during construction to avoid taking down trees.
Discussion.
I think the last sentence of that makes perfect sense, and, um, that we would put in a condition similar to what you and Heather talked about already, that just states that, that, you know, well, a field visit will make the final determination of what we can save. That's my recommendation.
As a condition?
As a condition.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's exactly what I would like to do.
That sounds fair. Any further comment from my board colleagues? Like to open it up for public comment? Yes, sir?
So, just to go back on the, the purpose of the bylaw, of the waivers, and how the waiver requirement in the OSRD is written, um, which the waiver must articulate why the challenging provisions are relevant to the project, and why waiving the provision better serves the interest of air and its citizens. That is directly the waiver out here. Not protecting trees 12 inches in diameter is directly opposed to the intent, and if you look at the, how the waiver submission is written for, I know it's not a subdivision, but the reason for approving waivers is written what's wing, that explicitly says the intent of the bylaws, so the intent of the OSRD bylaw is to preserve as open spaces.
The intent of the bylaw is not to preserve the trees, intent of the bylaw is to show every 12-inch tree on the plan.
It.
So what he's, what he's stating is, the actual bylaw, the guideline states that showing the existing tree, it's not preserve, that specific topic is not to preserve those trees, it, what it says is to show them on the plan.
So, yeah, so we should know more about showing them on the plan to reserve the open space. One of the other points in here to, to further, I, let me, let me finish this thought, and I swear to God it's relevant. So in the applicant's own, um, the applicant's own conservation analysis report, um, the connections adjacent to the forested area to the north, which is where they're going to have to take down trees to put in the, uh, the, the easement for all of the utilities, um, is, is likely important to any wildlife, wildlife on site, and the forest in the north of the site may serve as a corridor for moving any wildlife to and from the open space, providing habitat to the north and east. So that easement, or the utility line, not knowing what tree cover is there, and I can tell you, there's a lot of big trees along there, because that's literally how the deers get to and fro, the bobcat, the fox, they all travel that exact line, right through that space.
Can you, can you pull up the conditions?
Yeah, it's just, okay, here we go.
The trees are shown there, 12-inch trees and grass, that is where the easement is, and some of those trees, yes, are going to have to be removed, showing you right there where they are. And if you go further up, where the testing is, where the, where the, where the testing is shown, and, and there's one tree shown, just go further down, that tree is being preserved. So, so, um, the only trees that are being removed are some of the trees down at the bottom there. Unfortunately, I didn't have room to show them on the other plans exactly, but some of those trees are going to be removed.
So the waiver is to not have to show it on the map, is that literally the only, the only piece of the waiver is not? I feel like because it's an OSRD, any environmental and mapped out pieces need to actually be held to a higher standard to protect air, it doesn't do the people of air any good to not show these on the plans, so I don't think that this waiver should be approved.
Uh, just one thing on that as well, so that easement area is no longer part of the open space, so that, it's, now it's going to be considered, it's, they're going to bring it back to.
It is, and, and it's, and it's the fly, fly on our bylaw that I hope we wrap up soon, that by, that open space must be connected, because the fact that it isn't connected makes this, for the animals, environmentally unsound, so it, it doesn't actually, to me, go by the, uh, intent of the bylaw by allowing that separation. Thank you.
I think I'm going to walk right across the lawn when the thing is done.
Good, thank you.
Uh, can you, just to follow up on this, I did not bring the OSRD regulations and guidelines with me, can, can you want to find that section?
Yes.
Bring it, but I didn't bring it tonight.
Yeah, I didn't bring my binder either. Um, identify large trees over 12-inch, um, DBH to retain in the early stages of laying out a subdivision, lay out the road, driveways and utilities to preserve such large trees. So this is not a subdivision, which I get that, but the, um, so the, on this one, obviously the project is, uh, being secluded to one certain area, which the Conservation Commission had already determined where the, where the, um, protected area is going to be, or best area for protection should be.
Okay.
Beth, you had a comment?
Um, there's, oh yeah. There's also someone on, on.
Someone online?
Uh, Pauline, I believe.
Surprise, I know you didn't think I'd come up for this one. So I, what you just reviewed, you know, again, I was at the meeting where the conservation comments were considered, I don't think that there was a clear delineation of, you know, determination of developable, develop, the developed area versus the conservation area, and that is very, that's been very loose throughout the process, which I think has been very detrimental to the project, and, and one of the factors that would have been very helpful was having all of the trees mapped at that stage when you're considering the area, and I do feel like the Conservation Commission had a number of questions related to, um, it, you know, like, considering connectivity, considering continuity of the areas, ensuring that the open space area wasn't, um, broken up and was, had, had more integrity, right?
I don't believe they ever spoke about that.
I was at that meeting.
I wasn't at their meeting, but I was at the meeting that they.
Was given to us of the, the recommendations had none of that.
It, there, there was language related to, to keeping the open space.
There is open.
As, as like a, like integral part of the project, right? Like that it would be.
Yes, but that has nothing to do with whether or not they were connected.
Okay. I, I think that having the trees and understanding where they are, both for the area that we just looked the landscape plan for, but also in the easement areas and also in the open space areas is important. It's important to know where they are to be able to consider where they can be protected. It was just identified that, you know, like, where the easement's going to go through, that there will be some trees lost, is there any way to avoid, you know, some of those trees being lost? Um, you know, there's so much vegetation being lost.
At our last meeting, we did discuss that, we specifically said that when we were out there, we would require that they stake out the easement line, we, and that would be part of our pre-construction discussion.
But you understand that whenever they might re, you know, retain trees that are, you know, that would might maybe require a little bit of a deviation of the limit of work that they can't really do after plans have been endorsed and approved, you know, like, so.
But.
So there is a lot that can happen proactively before you get out to the, and I completely.
Understandable.
And you and Heather are doing the work that you are trying to. And, and protect those at the limit of work, but there's other areas that aren't necessarily adjacent to limit of work, where, where some grading can be tightened up and things can happen to.
Internal to the development, is that what you're talking about?
On, within the.
Like the developable area.
Development.
Yeah, with, internal to the developable area.
Or the open space area, or the easement area.
But the open space is not being touched, so that's what, that's why I'm trying, I'm
But I thought that there is a lot of disturbance to some of the open space areas.
No, that's why it's open space.
That's, that's the whole point.
It's the definition.
Nobody's touching the open space.
All right, well, I thought that that was a topic that, I'm sorry, I've missed a meeting, so maybe there was determination that I didn't catch.
Oh, 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 so I think what the confusion here is, is, so the easement line, the, you're talking about the easement area, right?
Yeah, she, she missed the whole.
That, that's no longer being considered part of the open space.
That's all changed, everything's changed.
Yeah, that's been changed.
That's good news, but.
That's why I meant when, when we, they're going to stake out the line, and we will go out there and inspect it to see what trees can be saved, that's including the easement line.
line as well.
Thank you.
We have it, yes, Kathleen?
My question, so, on this plan, there are some of the 12-inch trees shown, so, the delta where we don't have a plan is upwards of that. I'm just saying, if you don't approve the waiver, the applicant has to go back and make a plan with the trees, and then just where.
That's where, it's, it's within the developable area is basically what the question would be, is it?
Sorry, so, the, the, the project is split between the developed area and the open space. So, if I was to say, no, I don't want to waive the request,
Yep.
will I have a plan that shows me trees only in the developable area, or trees in the developable area and open space? I'm just trying to understand. Okay.
Follow up. This, the, the language of this waiver is unclear. Could you, Jonathan or Danny, help me understand exactly what is being requested?
Yeah, so the waivers for the, basically, since we already know where the open space is, it's already been determined, the developable area is what you would be asking for, because the open space is not being touched. So, the 12-inch trees, knowing where they are, serves no purpose on the open space. The purpose would be within the developable area, but since the, within the developable area, it's already going to, within the developable area, it's going to be, you know, clear cut, graded and all that. It doesn't, it's, it's only going to serve a purpose along the limit of work, which is where Heather and I come in.
Right, because there's, yeah, there's so much fill, so much cut, trees cannot be preserved inside that limit of work. Large tree.
And they are, they did show some of them on, on, like, you can see this 30, 33, 23, 28-inch oak, 28-inch, 28-inch oak, so they did show some of them.
We've done, we've done this before at Panther, we...
I think every...
12 to 24.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Kathleen?
So, if they had to go back and, and mark these trees, how onerous is this? Because from a perspective that I hold is that, okay, they're, they're, we, we know that it's going to be cut down, and so we're not going to show them, but it, it sounds like there are folks in the room that would like to see this information, and this is simply just a means of gathering more information. So, from that perspective, I, I didn't necessarily see a reasoning in the application as to why not provide the information. The reasoning seems to be we're going to...
A little bit more, or it's just how much time that goes into it. Because of, it's, it's a very wooded area. I, I don't, I don't know if...
But how much time goes into it?
It's, we'd have to...
It could be days.
Okay.
We have to hire an engineer with GPS and make sure that they can get to the satellites and, and mark each one, and then measuring each tree, know...
Yeah, I know, I, I totally get it. I'm just saying, like, if people want this information, right, and we have the ability to provide them with this information.
And I guess the, what he's stating is they're going to get cut down anyways.
And there's, and there's an opportunity, like everybody says, no one wants to cut extra trees down if they don't have to. If they can look, and the contractor can look and say, okay, I, I'll be able to get to this contour elevation right here, if I move it two feet, and I get to leave this 12-inch tree right here, he's not going to, we're not going to cut extra trees down that don't need to be cut down. That's something that, like Danny, you know, when you put up the silt fence, you're like, oh, well, we...
Uh, fully, I, I hear you, I, I understand. It's information that we don't have, that we couldn't have.
We cut, we cut down trees at the bottom of Ground Harvard Road that were 24 inches, that were right on the property line.
But that was only, only because they were leaning toward a, a butter's house, and danger issue. We're not just cutting down trees.
No.
That's not good.
No, sometimes trees have to get cut down.
So, I guess Kathleen, the question is like, what purpose does that information give? Like, what, what does that provide?
For us as a board, like, how are we changing our viewpoint or conversation for the amount of work and money? Is what I hear that, that's, it's a good dialogue to have, but that's where my head goes to what your question was, which is, what does that inform me of, and what in prior projects has it been important to see versus the times we've spent blocking the property and the times my trusted staff? You're not my staff, you know what I mean? It's like...
Colleagues.
No, you can make a comment, I'm acknowledging you, hold on to everyone else.
Just go to one of the, the utility plans, we can see the houses and everything. Well, that, that's fine. There's some areas, like behind that corner right there, okay?
If they, like, right there, there could be a tree right there.
Yeah, there, there's some areas like that.
I don't think so.
I don't know where it's...
Is it? Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
I don't think the new ones are.
All right, these are new.
The old one used to be.
All right, sorry.
There's areas right here, there's, there's a tree right there that does not have to be cut down right there. There's a tree right there that's not going to have to be cut down. There's probably...
And those, and those you will see when we stake out the lot line, and we can make sure those are not cut down. But everywhere else, there, there's, they're just, it's too dense to even consider keeping trees.
There's very minimal locations on that site that are existing grade, that show existing grade.
Okay.
Two spots.
And the, and the, and the other point I made was the fact that on the easement, all the trees are shown on the existing, on the existing condition plan, or they're not on that plan.
Yeah, on the, on this one.
Yeah. And, and you can see some of those will have to come down probably, and to move them will be, to move the easement is not going to be very easy. And that's what it amounts to.
And so, like with this area, when we're, when Heather and I are out there, we'll say, okay, let's ribbon these trees up so that we know those are being protected, because there's no real grading in this area, even though the limit of work is this line out here as shown, but we're going to protect these trees, because they can be retained, it's, it's a, it's a, it's typically easier to do in the field by Heather and I, we can see where the limit of work is, because yes, the limit of work is shown as a straight line, excuse me, a straight line on this plan, but when you're out there, it's not going to be straight, it's going to zigzag a little bit, it's going to weave between trees, and when we're out there, Heather and I will be able to say, okay, these trees aren't going to be touched, so let's protect these.
I think that gets back to what I said at the very beginning, it's the last sentence, that further adjustments may be considered during construction. So, I'd like to recommend that we waive this, approve this waiver, but we condition the approval that a site visit by the professionals in Town Hall and accompanied by the owners and the engineer will identify any trees that can be saved on the site.
In a, in a special finding.
And they'll be marked.
A condition.
A condition of our approval.
Yeah.
So, we don't just...
Yeah, special condition.
To clarify, can you, could any tree not 12 plus up in there?
I call it, you know, I'd say 12 to 24 inch, well, it doesn't matter the size, save the trees.
Eight-inch tree too?
Yeah.
I'm not against saving any eight-inch tree.
Yeah, save the trees that can be saved, and that's what we're trying to do. We can't control the fact that the site is pitched, and everything's going to be cleared, and it has to be regraded. The only thing we can control is it's close to the perimeter of the, of the, the developed area. The rest is going to be cleared, there's no question about it. There's no sense trying to find every tree inside that cleared area, because they're going to be gone.
And we, don't forget that this...
And we are going to, we're going to put them off, we're going to put as many trees...
Right.
Back again.
Right.
Right, and, and the fact that we have all this open space, big difference to a standard subdivision.
Exactly.
I had two peo...
So, that's my recommendation.
I'm sorry, what?
I would, well, would you help me understand the conditions? Is it a condition, any tree or 12 plus? It sounds like you just say that they all...
I'd, I'd write it up, I'd let, left it Danny to put the language in, but any tree or wooded area, use a term like that, that can be preserved during construction, will be ribboned off and marked as a perimeter of work with professionals in the Town Hall. So, call it a wooded area, call it a tree, whatever you want, but it's mostly wooded.
Mr. Buck first, and then, didn't you raise your hand? I thought you did. Oh, no, it was, oh, I'm sorry, wrong guy, you. Yeah, I'm sorry, was it Kuzera? I, I, I saw, I got confused there. Mister...
So, I guess one of the things on this that, that kind of chafes is we keep on talking about how the developers has all the rights in the bylaw, the planning board doesn't have flex in that, they have to follow the bylaw. So, the input of being like, oh, well, this bylaw sucks, that doesn't, doesn't matter. Whereas the waivers where, even though it might be inconvenient, it might be time-consuming, it might be costly, that doesn't mean that it's for the good of the air in the, in the waiver bypass, that it should be allowed to be waived. So, the, like, that I think is going to exemplify at least my frustration, as well as us, that there is finally something that, like, we feel like we can be like, all right, well, these trees, like, I know along that easement line, that's the backyard I look into, where the, where the deer are every day. There are trees bigger than that that are going to be cleared that are not on the map. So, like, I, I think that that knowledge and input of what is lost is important, and to the town of air and the people. Knowing what we've lost with this development may further enhance our ability to come up with better bylaws in the future that we can enforce, and that's why I don't think this waiver should be granted.
Thank you. Beth, you wanted to go next?
And then also Pauline has been waiting.
Okay, shit, sorry.
Thank you, because that is essentially what I wanted to offer as well. Let, let this project be a learning process for us all, and let's hope that we never need to manipulate a site to this extent. Again, it is incredibly destructive, and if we know the trees that are lost and can perform calculations about them, if we know the trees where we have maybe dense stands and mature trees with some nice rock outcroppings, and there's a desire to eliminate one of your houses so that you can have a really exceptional feature for this neighborhood preserved from, you know, the rest of the rubble around it, or if that might be the area that the children could have a play space, you know, just so that you have this information, and all can collectively make decisions about where we might want to have enhancements and natural resources protected within the site, including those that you might choose to opt to protect, if, if the grading can accommodate it, you know, if the play space can be located there, these sorts of things, including as, as was just said, the information that'll go into the development of future bylaws that will protect steep slopes and trees more.
Thank you. Pauline?
Good evening, and thank you for making my comment after Beth, because it's a great segue. There are four proposed zoning amendments on your agenda tonight. I don't know if you're going to get there, that was not my intent in raising my hand, but since Beth brought it up, I hope everybody will stay and pay attention. What I wanted to say 20 minutes ago, someone on that table, at the table, I'm sorry, made a comment that a bylaw is a recommendation.
What? Oh, who said that?
I believe, I believe we're under the landscape portion of Zero High Street.
I, I don't think anyone said bylaws are recommendations.
Danny, I didn't say you said it.
No, 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 I, I, I know, I, I'm saying, I don't think I heard that, I...
What he said was, is a law interpretation. You did say that.
I said that?
The law would just interpret, the law would interpret the bylaws.
I definitely did not say that.
Well, what is this specifically about anyway, Pauline? What, what...
I just wanted to make that point to clarify for page in this chair, and I would also like to ask the gentleman to the left of Ms., Ms. Field to speak to the microphone when he is talking.
And that won't help you, because that's not the Zoom mic.
It will, I, I bet...
It's over here.
Yeah, Pauline, I know, we ran into this, so the mics are only for APAC, the Zoom is right, is this big modular thing right in the center? We know, yeah, we...
Let him sit closer to the table.
Okay, I'll just, I'll make sure he speaks up.
Thank you. And Kathleen, I want to thank you for standing up for the residents who are concerned about the trees. I, I appreciate that, because so far I think you're the only one that really cares, and I follow this planning board a lot. So, that's my summary for the time being, and I will still be here.
Okay.
Quick question, Julianne Goveng, 34, Grotton Harvard Road. Can we pull this down a little bit, so that we can see the infiltration basin in front of it? In the discussion of trees themselves, there is a Japanese maple right at the corner of the property at 38 Grotton Harvard Road. Will that be retained?
I don't think it can be, but we're, we're planning to get it professionally transplanted.
Okay, so we lose it, but it's going to go somewhere else?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Hello, Rachel Kuzera, 30 Grotton Harvard Road. I just wanted to point out, uh...
Excuse me, please, no talking room, so that everyone can hear, thank you.
I just wanted to, I guess, point out the importance of marking the trees in a biological sense. I know that you can't save the animals that fall down, you know, if there's like nests and what have you, but there are different, I want to say, I don't know, I haven't been back there, but endangered species, I know that there's a...
There are no...
Endangered species there.
But what about raptors? Are raptors protected? Um, well, I just, the trees weren't marked, so, it's just in a, they're established homes of animals that have been living there. I don't know how fast trees grow, but it just seems like it would be helpful, just with, I guess, recourse, and just getting the help that might be needed with regard to that. So, I don't know.
Thank you.
Anyhow, thank you.
I just want to point out, I, I, I know I shouldn't open this up, but the idea that this board doesn't care about trees or forest, that's actually outrageous. The whole purpose, the whole reason that we've done this OSRD, remember, is to save that space, is to save that space, and to say that we've neglected our obligation to the environment, to the people of this town, that's unacceptable, because it's absolutely untrue. Now, in this specific instance of marking the 12-inch trees, we have two different areas, developable and undevelopable. The open space, it's irrelevant, because the trees are going to stay there anyway. Now, the whole point, now with OSRD, the trade-off that we have for development is, in exchange for the 50% open, they're allowed greater density in the developed area. Now, with that developed density comes the reality that it becomes more difficult to preserve individual trees in that space, and clearcutting is more likely to occur, and that's why we have the options of landscape, we have, not option, but we have the obligation for landscape, and that's why we have the option of delineating the trees that we can't save along the edges as a condition, as a realistic measure. I, you know, to say, we're going to put the, I just feel that the, making this an oblig, imposing the obligation, even though the information will not change, the activity on the site seems excessively punitive rather than helpful, and that's my own opinion. That's it. That's all I have to say. Yes?
Um, I just want to point out, and just as a, oh, my apologies, Rachel Kuzera, 30 Grotton Harvard Road. Um, I just, I, I come up here, it's, it's not out of, I don't know how to describe it. I'm not coming up here just to talk, it was just more along the statement, but, um...
I, I, oh, I don't think he was directing that.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not referring to you at all, my, my apologies, it's not in reference to that.
No, I didn't think so.
Um, but the applicant laughed at me when I left the table, and I don't know, I'm not trying to be mad about it, but it's just like, I don't come up here to, I don't know, try to, like, you guys are going to decide what you decide, because you're the experts on this, and I, you know, put my faith in you, but it's just like when, I'm just coming up...
just coming up here, I, you know, poor goodness, I'm blanking on her name. Christine came up and mentioned that she cries every time that she goes up a hill. It's just, you know, for me, it's more than just a development, um, you know, it's, it's na, it's nature. I don't, I don't know how to describe it, I'm not gonna sit here and talk for a while, but it's, I don't know, I just, I'm just trying my best to advocate for my neighbors and, uh, the land and what have you, so I just, I just wanted to point that out. It's just, it's, it takes a lot for me to come up here, I'm a little bit nervous, but it's just kinda like, you know, I don't know, procedurally speaking, uh, what that qualifies for, but I just wanted to point that out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matt Polis, 43 Highland Avenue. I understand that it may be punitive and time-consuming to map out the trees, but I think this is a bylaw for a reason, and it serves as an important record going forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for clarification.
It's a regulation. It's a regulation.
This is not a bylaw we're talking about.
Right.
It's a regulation and a design guideline, in the OSRD specifically, within the OSRD.
Correct.
Any further public comment? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we waive the, um, requirement to map trees of 12-inch diameter within the developed area per the OSRD regulation and design guidelines, with the condition that a special condition will be applied, uh, in our findings, that, uh, Danny and Heather, or equivalent town professionals, will identify wooded areas, uh, along the perimeter that are, uh, can be saved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Respectfully, no.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie? Chair votes aye. Next one is the EPA pollutant removal?
Yes. Um, I was hoping Matt was gonna stay on this one, for this one. Um, so, the EPA pollutant removal method, um, refers to Section 2.8b9 of the Air Stormwater Regulations. The Stormwater Management Report follows closely the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, and the design meets all, uh, town stormwater regulations by a fair margin, including the reduction in the TSS, um, removal and phosphorus removal, using the EPA pollutant removal method becomes redundant. This was discussed during our, um, peer review discussion with, um, with, uh, Green International, and, yes, Jim, and, um, he did agree that this one was, it was redundant, so, because they were already applying what the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook does. Our bylaw just does the same thing, but they, we just go by the, it's called the EPA pollutant removal method.
So, to be clear, this waiver does not remove the obligation for the removal.
No.
Or obeying the laws. It's just that they went by a different set that covers the same thing. Is that, is that right? So, the same standards are there, they're being met, nothing's being neglected here.
Correct, and that was, um, Green International said that it, it shouldn't be a condition. The waiver would be fine, and it'd be, um, that it would be okay to be waived.
Oh, okay. Uh, questions among the board members first? Comments?
I'm good with it, because I heard it from Green International, so.
Does the public have any input on this one? Anyone online?
No.
Um, I'll make, then, I will make a motion to, uh, accept the waiver of the EPA's pollutant removal method, um. Refer in subsection 2.8b9 of Air Stormwater Regulations.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen? Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Okay, we've gone through the waivers, right?
Yes.
Okay, next.
So, um, in terms for the next meeting, the intent would be to do, uh, the stormwater report, uh, to go through the stormwater. As of right now, I think that's kind of the only thing that's kind of left open right now to discuss. The, um, I will, um, have Jim from Green International attend the meeting as well, uh, most likely on Zoom, uh, hopefully this time we can see him, and, um, if, i, i, uh, once the applicant will be able to, you'll be able to respond to those prior to.
He already did it, he just wanted to make sure nothing came out of this meeting tonight that he would need to actually.
Okay, great. So, once they submit that over to me?
Adding the guardrail.
Can I make a comment about the parking lot? Thank you. Uh, the, the issue about the parking lot and the stormwater review, the comments came up regarding the parking lot.
Yes.
Now, that parking lot plan is not under peer review.
Correct.
And I think it is important to make it clear, in response to his comments, that the only issue I'm covering there is the fact that there is a fire retention basin that has a certain volume to cover the one-inch runoff, and the amount, and the area, and that's all taken into, because that's all we're taking into account in the stormwater that I'm, that he's reviewing. Everything else, he's not reviewing.
That is correct, yes, and I did discuss this with Matt. The only thing we would suggest is, um, was his comment about a test pit when, within that area, that was something that Matt and I did agree should still occur.
Which I'm perfectly fine with, we'll do a test pit, and if it needs, we have.
And, and, and that can be done prior to construction?
Yes, yes.
Condition of approval?
Yeah, that was the intent, was make that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Um, but I do agree, technically, he's not reviewing that project. He did provide some of those comments, but.
Right, but what he is reviewing is the area of the co, of the, of, of the paved area, because that is being considered in, in the, in the, in the drainage report, and the fact that there is a fire retention basin of a certain volume that covers one-inch of, of paved area, and that's it.
Exactly.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion for continuance?
A move that may continue. The Zero High Street and 38 Grotton Harvard Road, Lincoln Hills Project, application for site plan review, special permit, and, uh, inclusionary housing and stormwater permit to the September 23rd planning board meeting.
Seconded.
September 23rd.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. All right. Uh, I'm gonna qualify, I mean, is, is, this was a procedural vote, what, do you have a comment?
I just have a question, um, about blasting, and that, that, that closed deal.
That's, that's closed, right now, we.
So, no more discussion ever coming up ever again?
Uh, not tonight.
I understand that, I'm saying, my comment's 23rd, will it come up again?
The blasting? No, we'll be talking about stormwater.
Who's talking?
Uh, Julianne Goveng. Sorry, I, I know, sorry.
And the question?
Apologies, I didn't want to make a big deal out of it.
No, no.
When we talked about stormwater, you said it was gonna be coming up on the 23rd.
Yep.
My question is, are we done talking about blasting from this point forward? Or will that come back onto the agenda?
So, I feel, at this point, the, um, Onyx did address all the comments, and the fire department was also here. Um, the fire department felt comfortable, I feel comfortable, it's kind of up to the board to decide whether they feel they're off, they're comfortable with that as well.
I did, I did, I have spoken with people that did have other concerns about the pulverization and the blasting section of it. I'm not gonna ask any more questions about it, but there are other people that did have questions, so I'm just wondering, are they waiting for another meeting to, thinking it was continued, or?
No, I mean, we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting on blasting, so.
I was there.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's why I'm saying, it was a, it was a very extensive conversation that occurred, the fire department was there for quite a long time, and they are satisfied. I'm satisfied, it's kind of the board's decision whether or not they're satisfied with it as well.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, do I have to take?
Um, the meeting has been continued.
The meeting's already been continued. We're, we're, we're moving on, thank you. Five-minute recess. All right, Danny, we have, uh, proposed zoning amendments, I just want to make a clear. Oh, we have to open the public hearing for the pro, so I, I'd like to make a motion, we open a public hearing for the four proposed zoning amendments listed on our agenda.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Yeah, the discussion, so, I just want to mention that this meeting has been advertised appropriately.
Yes.
According to what we need to do to talk about.
That is correct. It was properly notified in the newspaper, and, um, properly advertised on the walls, it was sent out to all of the, uh, abutting towns, as well as, um, uh, the list of, of other departments that need to be notified, yes.
So, should we get into the law about that notification, and when these go into the effect, we'll leave that later?
I mean, I, I don't think it's, um.
Leave it alone.
I don't think it's, it's that, I mean, if you want to get into.
Everything has been properly advertised, we're ready to hit, open the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Uh, I just want to explain, the proposed zoning amendments, uh, what we're doing here is a procedural, uh, discussion to see whether we would promote this, or push them up and recommend them as warrants for the town meeting. So, our vote tonight is not voting these into effect by any measure, that's determined democratically at town meeting, where there'll be a thorough presentation, opportunity for discussion and debate, and ultimately a vote, and in fact, it's, it's a heavy lift, it's a two-thirds vote required to pass. So, again, this discussion is about rec, making the rec, or whether or not to make a recommendation for these, to move them onto the warrant, to the select board, who will then in turn vote, or one way or the other, about their applicability on, for town meeting, on the warrant. So, the first item up, uh, Danny, will you set this up for us?
Yes, so, the first item is, um, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendment to section 320 dash 3.5 site plan review by removing section 3.58, calculating the number of units in developments approved through site plan review, or take any action relative to it.
And can you explain what this is?
Yes, actually, I'll let.
Oh, oh, in fact, Ken is gonna explain what this is.
So, and the reason I'm taking this is because I've been on the board long enough to see when this was put into the site plan regulations. So, when we developed the new zoning and we passed it in, uh, 2018.
Seventeen.
Uh, March of 18, maybe of 17, 18. We put in the original zoning, and this was not included. We had no provision for this section. Mr. Ashenbo, our previous planner, so we put in the open space residential development requirements, and we didn't have a way to calculate under hit, under site plan approval. So, Mike Ashenbo was concerned that we put some standard in there to calculate this method of finding how many units we could put on the site plan. He used the same language that was in the original approval of the OSRD. We then found out that the OSID approval we didn't, we thought was too plentiful, so we made it more restrictive by taking away portions of the wetlands and steep slopes, and we put that through in the town meeting.
And that's where you went to the yield plan.
We went to the yield plan, okay? The result of that was, this stayed in the bylaw, and we, in our probability, should have taken it out sooner, but we didn't get to it. So, the long and the short of it is that this has never been used, we've never had an application for it, and within the dimensional requirements in the tables that we have, it basically covers what's required for setbacks, for heights of buildings, to all the requirements that are needed to develop a site plan. So, since there's been no applications, since it's never really applied to a project that we've seen, and subsequent to that, the Affordable Housing Working Group also looked at this and thought that it was too restrictive, in, in the sense that it didn't allow for some density of lots, that's how it came back to us, and that's how Danny is bringing it forward at this point in time. We just feel that it doesn't apply anymore. It was put in back then when we thought maybe there'd be an application, but there never was. I actually still have the slides, I didn't bring them tonight, from the town meeting presentation, and the example that was given at that time at that town meeting was the land of about 40 acres. He was concerned with land that was north of town, that particularly could, something could come forward in a large-scale project, it never happened. Now, we've changed density, we've changed OSRD, we've made it more restrictive and so forth, so there doesn't seem to be any application for this anymore.
I did also run, uh, discuss this with town council, and she did agree that, you know, typically, you don't see this anymore, um, because you have the dimensional requirements.
I, I want to underline that, so, removing this doesn't mean the town doesn't have any protection in terms regarding the calculation. The point of removing this is that we have in place already, and the table uses a superior way of making that, uh, the dimensionals for making those calculations.
Correct, so.
Okay.
We have a dimensional, um, table, which shows what is required, um, for each lot, and that is basically how you govern the lot, on what you can, cannot, you know, build within that lot. So, you have to meet the open space requirement within it, the, um, setbacks, um, building heights, um, impervious, um, area, there's, there are already built into our dimensional requirements. This is just kind of something that has been lingering there, that has not been used.
Discussion? Any board members have any questions or comments?
I support this, particularly the A2. I think in, in.
Yeah.
In A2, it makes it nearly impossible to, um, increase density on existing developed land.
Exactly.
It pushes, it pushes, uh, I think it pushes development out.
Right. Good, anyone else? Kathleen?
Just a clarification, um, the law was said, is this a material change or not?
No, so, it's more of a getting, it's more of a clerical, because we're removing this, it's never been used, not since it's been put in, and it was, we have a dimensional table, which, if, if you want, I can pull that up as well, and it basically does the exact same thing, but what this section 3.5.8 does is it, it's very restrictive in the sense of, you know, ha, it's, it has specific, half of the area of your land slopes, and 20% and greater can't be included as part of this, um, total acreage of, of ponds, um, as well as the way you calculate the numbers. So, basically, like, if you had a one-acre lot, and you wanted to do a apartment building with, say, 10, 10 units, you couldn't do that unless you ran the, with this calculation, you, you just couldn't do that. Um, it's too restrictive. If you did, if we use our dimensional requirements, which is what we typically use on every other project, you could. And that's what really governs our, our densities and our restrictions within a lot.
It's a little misnomer to say, I understand what you're saying, when you say it's not used, but it, especially in the smaller lots, in A2, um, it, it blocks you from doing, um, anything, because it is, it really is intended, I believe, for multi-acre.
Exactly. Public input. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Anyone, Beth?
So, the portion that identifies, um, it's section B, where it says, you know, like, it's, it's looking at steep slopes in particular, wetland areas, things like that, that you remove from the calculation, um, floodplain, you know, those sorts of things, um, so those are captured on all other parcels, is, but, and again, you know, after this project that we're looking at now, I'm particularly concerned about steep slopes, and I'm not understanding why the steep slopes, slopes weren't excluded from, um, you know, from the development area.
They were.
They were.
There was a 50, in the OSRD, there's a requirement that no more than 50% of, of, of the steep slopes, um, can be within the, um, they have to be evenly distributed. We looked at that.
So, we just need to go beyond that in order to prevent what's happening from happening, right?
This, so this wouldn't even apply, this doesn't even apply to the OSRD. The yield plan applies to the OSRD, that's the problem. This used to apply to the OSRD, then the yield plan was put in, and now this is just sitting there.
Right, but this, I mean, what's his name, Aric, right? This sounds more like his type. This sounds more like his types of bylaws, right?
Who?
The, the guru of open space bylaws. No, no.
No, 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 no. I.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Aric.
Yeah, this, so this is, but this is.
It just sounds more like his type of structure, right?
I mean, in, I don't know. I would say that in my experience, and based on town councils, she says, you know, typically you don't see this anymore.
Because I, I mean, I just.
That's why we have a dimensional requirement.
I want to understand the implications for eliminating it. I understand, like in some cases, it's restrictive where you don't want it to be, which is certainly something that we would want to look into as well. But, you know, like I kind of would, you know, I'm just really in favor of stepping back and looking at these bylaws more holistically. Not that we're going to be able to do that before October 3rd when the warrant closes, right? But, you know, just to really understand, hire a consultant, you know, have them peer review things, you know, just really look at what we're doing because, because we've got some concerns, right? I think all of us have some concerns that you just identified, you know, about, about what our bylaws currently result in.
And just specifically, you know, like on this one, since the yield plan was put in, what, about eight years ago? Seven years ago, twenty eighteen, you said?
No, the yield plan was done in nineteen, probably.
Twenty nineteen? We have no project has applied, has, this has never applied to a project. So it's kind of like what we did with the inclusionary housing. That had been in place for eight years, never had any applications. We've, we looked at it, revised it, and changed.
But the intent of this was for a large project.
That's what the, that's what the slide showed at the town meeting that he demonstrated. It was a project of forty acres that he used as, as an example. And it, yeah, tended to work on those big projects, but it doesn't work on, well, it's never been used.
Right, but it's not been used, but what's the harm in keeping it in place then if we do have a large project?
Because it'll, the most likely fall into what we're doing right now under, under the standard OSRD. It'll fall right in that. This was considered to be, you know, something under site plan review, but we have that same duplication that we're, in the project we're looking at, which is coming in under site plan review. So we'll have an opportunity to use the OSRD that we have and not this calculation, the yield plan and the other things that go along with it. So I just don't see it.
For larger, for A2, for G, for, for general residence with the, with the state's ADU by right, now, you know, this, I don't know, would you say this would block?
Is it relevant?
A lot of that?
It's irrelevant.
I mean, it can't, it can't block it, but.
I mean, no, I mean, if there are, if there's a project, like I gave an example, like if you have a one acre lot that you want to do an apartment building on with ten units, say, you have one acre, that's a big lot. You, based on how this works, you can't do that. You could only probably get maybe two units. It, it's, it's, we don't have, I mean, currently, we don't have any properties that are that, that are much bigger than currently what we're working on right now. There really are no open, there are no lots that are that large anymore in, in air that are developable. Really, the concern here is the smaller infill stuff now. And this is.
That can be handled separately, right?
But, no, because this is, this would prohibit it.
This prohibits it.
That's why we're getting rid of that. And the dimensional requirements would be. The, so unit calculation, to determine the base number of unit counts allowable by residential dwelling, dwelling units on site, divide the net area of the calculated above by the minimum lot area for the applicable zoning district. So if you have a one acre lot and your minimum lot area is, say, you know, let's say A1, it's forty thousand, you can't really do anything. It's super restrictive.
Yeah, and minimum lot area is like twenty-five percent of a lot.
Yes.
It's, it, it blocks.
We want the infill. That's, that's really what we're trying to.
I guess, yeah, that's the question, right? Do you want, where, where we have infrastructure, where, where there's utilities already existing, where we've already disturbed land?
But I'm, I'm thinking that we handle infill separately from we handle the biggest parcels in the town, right? That's not, it shouldn't be like one eliminates the other.
But that's.
There are, but there are.
That's what the OSRD.
There are.
That's what we have the OSRD for, yes.
And I'm, I have concerns with the OSRD as it's currently.
That's not on the agenda right now.
Yes.
That's why I'm already, I mean, as part of this, we're proposing some changes and we're, after this, you know, after this project, Heather and I are going to meet again and review all of the things that have come up as part of this process and then also revise as well. So it's a learning process for us all.
I just would really look rather do more comprehensive review and understand the implications before we make changes that affect large parcels.
Doesn't affect large parcels.
There really aren't any.
But let's, I'm going to let it go.
It's fine.
We.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public input? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. A move that we.
Think recommend?
Recommend. Recommend to the select board.
Yep.
The warrant article, it's not even numbered, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendment to section 320 dash 3.5 site plan review by removing section 3.5.8.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. And the second one is the floodplain overlay district.
Yes.
What's this about, sir?
So this one specifically was, so as I informed the board a couple, you know, a while ago, when we, when we put in the floodplain bylaw, as part of the model, there's a section that talks about variances, and I used the wrong reference, which was the one that Boston and the two other towns uses. So as part of what happened was FEMA, we met with FEMA, we, and as part of that, they said that what we would do is put that, the correct version in the wetland regulations until we could make the amendment at town meeting. So currently, they're under the wetland protected, the wetland regulations right now, and they're in the correct format. So what would happen is we would amend these and then.
We would rescind it from the wetland regulations so that the bylaw would stand alone and would be correct.
Reason we did this was we did not want the, you know, people in town to lose flood insurance.
Right.
That was the biggest concern, was to make sure that everyone kept their flood insurance. So we went down that route and that's why we, when we discussed with FEMA, they said this was the best option. So now we're going for a fall town meeting, we're amending the scope of authority, which was clerically was missed when it was put on the warrant, even though on the, on the actual proposal, it was shown, what we voted to town meeting, or to, voted to recommend, but it just, when it got, when they put it on the warrant, they missed that section. And then section 8.28, which is the variance. So it strikes the certain communities, which is, you know, the one that talked about Boston and like two other communities, which they do their own variances through the building code, state building code. We have the proper reference now, which is, you know, local zoning bylaws related to community compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So these, this is the proper one that we.
So basically, this brings us just into conformance with the state fundamentally. And allows.
With FEMA.
With FEMA.
With FEMA, not the state.
Not the state, FEMA, federal. And by being in conformance, of course, we're helping people with flood insurance, retain the flood insurance.
Yes.
Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none? Any, any questions or comments from the public? Anyone online?
No.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the select board to put on the warrant, to approve the amendment to section 320 dash 8.2.3 and 8.28 of the floodplain overlay district or take any action relative therein.
Seconded.
Further questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Kathleen? I'm sorry, we're in the middle of the vote. I'm sorry. Nathan? Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. I'm sorry, what? Did you have a question or comment? Okay.
Wait, no, just let her come up.
Have a question?
Yeah, you can come up and speak.
You have a question? No? The third one is proposed amendment to section 320, nine, one, two, off-street park requirements, but I think this is specific to the West.
This is, no, this is for the downtown district.
Downtown business district, okay.
Uh, no, specifically, that's, we, we removed that T6. It's the downtown form-based code.
So what does it do?
So basically what this does is, as opposed to, so in, currently, the way it says is in the T6 transit, downtown transit oriented lifestyle of the downtown park, form-based code, currently, it's one parking space. We would be removing, moving it down to half a parking space. So what we've been seeing is there is, there's movement to try and develop downtown and try to develop these empty lots, these old rundown buildings, but the parking requirement, because the town of Air currently has a parking concern downtown, there is, it, it makes it almost impossible for developers to build anything. And so currently, other than what we're doing here, you know, we have been looking at lots within the town that we can look at to buy and create parking. There's, so, and at the last meeting, I was going to be updating the board as to what we've been doing, but we've been looking at several lots within this downtown area that would provide parking for the down, whole downtown area. This is going to help alleviate some of that. And what would happen is, as part of, as what we're doing of looking at these lots and trying to buy these lots to promote more parking in these areas, we would also be pushing partnerships with other businesses that are currently downtown that don't use their parking during the night to provide parking for residents in the area. So we're looking at other options to try to really facilitate that development within the downtown area. And we only wanted to do it in the downtown area to see how it would work, to see would, if, if it would promote the development that we're hoping for. The, you know, I went to the NPC conference in Denver and one of their big things was that there, a lot of towns and cities in the US are going towards removing parking minimums and just going to parking maximums. You can't go any higher than this number. And what they've seen is that there is no detriment from that. You know, they've actually noticed that a lot of these requirements are actually too high. And so when these developments come in and propose the amount of parking that they are requesting, it's typically smaller than what's required, but it, it usually handles everything that they need. And so we're, we do understand that, you know, parking is a concern in air, but we're looking at all these other options and this is one of the multifaceted way we're looking at addressing that.
Yeah, my one comment is, uh, let's put that zero ahead of the point five?
Yes, yes.
Just as in line C, you can see they've done that exact same thing.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the board?
You know, we've talked about this for years, literally years. And anyone who's in the real estate business downtown tells us what, this is one of the biggest problems we have is projects come in and simply cannot.
Make the park.
Make the park and count, you know, get the number of spaces that's required. And everything we hear is about, you know, transit oriented and people aren't going to use as many cars. And if that in fact is the case, then they don't need as many parking spaces. I'm for this.
I don't support this. I'd be fine if it was limited to T6, or maybe I'd have to see the map to see, like, really close in, or we don't jump all the way down to half, maybe point seven. I can see there's, there's, in T6 for sure, there's just no space for parking. But the other.
Oh, the zoning map?
Yeah, that's what I'm pulling it up right now.
You know, and I hear what you're saying, Danny. There's a lot of promise.
So the T6 is only, is this area right here?
Yeah, T6, what was T5, like?
T5 is the, these.
Yeah, it's such a, it is a large area and there's especially adjacent to the railroad tracks. I think there's opportunity, you know, where the pharmacy used to be in that, in that lot for parking there and I just.
Yeah, that, that was bought by the pharmacy and their intent is to make a parking lot for themselves.
Sorry, not, not the pharmacy you know of, the old pharmacy that used to be.
T6 square.
Oh, I don't know. Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, I got confused there.
My friends.
Oh, Barry.
Barry.
So I don't support going this level.
Okay. You don't support it because you think it should only be in the T6? Is that what you're saying?
Something a little, it's too bold of a move for me. I agree, we need to address parking. I don't want to recommend something on a lot of promise without things concrete.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public have a question or comment? Anyone online?
Yes, Pauline.
Pauline?
Oh, sorry, I did not read. Uh, one question. I read this with interest. Does this have any impact on West Main Street? I know it says downtown slash Park Street, but downtown includes West Main Street. And without, I would say I did not go detail into T6, but does it have any impact on any development on West Main Street?
So it does, are you talking about the West Air Village? That, that form-based code area?
And if you call it what you want, it's always West Main Street to those of us.
Yeah, but the point is, it's a different.
I know, no, I, I understand what you're saying.
Beyond the Korean restaurant.
District is what I'm, I'm trying to specify here. Because there's the, you know, where the DMG project down, all the way down by the, the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
So it will not affect down there. I have that, and that's, there's a specific reason we did that is I don't want it, I don't, we don't feel like it's necessary down there. We want to see it down in the more dense area where it's, it's harder to get development and harder for these buildings to be redeveloped, to see if it works.
All right, then, well, let's make that clear when you present it to town meeting, because I will ask that question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. I'll, yes, Beth?
I'm sorry, it's late and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this clearly.
Yep.
So you're striking T6?
Yep.
What's that?
So if you're looking at the plan, it's this red area. It's all the red boxes.
Why are you striking that?
Because I want it to include the, the black. The whole downtown form-based code.
So it's making it bigger.
Okay, so you're, you struck.
Can we explain that, that there was a logic at the beginning that this should only apply in T6?
Yeah, so that actually occurred prior to.
The rest of downtown.
Yes.
When we're saying we're striking the language T6, it's not striking it from it. It's expanding it to include the whole downtown.
Okay, okay.
So, but we're just taking the language T6 out because we don't want that specificity. We want to cover the whole downtown Park Street form-based code district.
T6 has the, the smallest requirement right now of one space per unit. What we're saying is we're going to make it all.
Right.
Same and, and reduce it to half a space per unit.
That's, that's right.
But yet for multifamilies, you need one space per studio, one and a half spaces per one.
Yet not if they're in the downtown form-based code.
So that is for all other areas?
Yeah.
But in the form-based code.
Yeah, that's why there's a, that comes before, you know, the, it talks about the requirements. And then after that is in the downtown park, you know, street form-based code, that's where it gets specific only to that area.
And I'm cur, I'm really curious about the distinction that's being made between the West Main Street where we're seeking development on brownfields and choosing to do some incentive like this to encourage development versus in like more low-income areas where we already have multifamily housing that's working.
So the West Air Village, the reason we did not include that is because those lots are much bigger.
So the West Air Village, the reason we did not include that is because those lots are much bigger. You can accommodate parking on those, on those lots. Those are much, much larger lots than what we have in the downtown area. The downtown area, these are tiny, tiny lots. It's harder to provide parking for multifamily. Like we have multiple people that approach us about wanting to develop these smaller lots that are vacant right now, but can't make the parking work. So that's really the concern that we're hearing. And that's why we're trying to make that work because we really want the downtown to work. If you bring the residents, the people to live there, you have the foot traffics which will make then in turn help the businesses and that really provides the transit oriented development.
To be clear, they don't have the guarantee that it worked because it's the planning board has the waiver ability to waive the parking, so they can come before us.
Only, only if we, um, if they provide it off-site somewhere else. That's the only way you're allowed. It, I, we've, we've looked at it in the special, in in the parking area.
Maybe that's the thing you might want to change then. Cause I, I'm really concerned about displacement in this neighborhood that you're focusing on because we do have effective lower income multifamily accommodations.
I don't understand the displacement issue. I don't get it.
Yeah, what is that?
I don't, how would this displace people?
When people knock down buildings, combine lots and then build something that's no longer affordable.
So you wanted discourage development in the downtown?
No, 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 not discourage the development, but think about, think about just what we have in terms of a nice mix of the smaller.
But this is parking, we're talking parking here.
This is not beyond the downtown form-based code district. It's a very small footprint. You want to put it up there again?
It's, it's own. It's only this black, this black.
Right down in this spot.
Only this area.
Right.
It doesn't go beyond that.
And and what we're hearing from the business owners, from the property owners is they can't do anything with their property that they want to redevelop and make and and provide the housing and provide the businesses because they can't make the parking work.
I definitely, you know, don't like the, you know, the minimums and want to be flex, want to see that we can be flexible with that. But I just want to make sure that we evaluate, you know, more consequences, um, as well.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's why I, you know, my, I mean, as, as, as I said, you know, a lot of towns are going to the getting rid of minimums. I don't know what impact that would have on us, which is why I'm like, as opposed to going to getting rid of the minimum, let's go down to half a space. Let's see what the impact is. Does it promote development? Does it not promote development? Does it, does it change anything at that point? And see, does it, you know, incrementally go, go about it? I don't want to just outright go changing it because if we get rid of the minimum, I don't know what that does. I, I would be, I, I would be a little afraid for the downtown area as to what that would do.
I mean, it's also contents, context specific too. So having a little bit of flexibility with it is important. So, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Adam Carrier, fifty-seven Cambridge Street. Um, I just, I'm by no means an expert on any of this, but it just, my really quick reading of this, it sounds like you could almost get, if you do get the development, you could then generate a parking problem because you don't have enough parking for the people living there. I think your point, I, I would just like to echo what Mr. King said, that it seems to me that, you know, we might get more people in there and create a parking problem where no one can go to the businesses other than the people that live in the neighborhood because they can't find a parking space. Um, I, I live just up the street here, so it's not a problem for me, but it might well be a problem for people who live a little further away or are less mobile.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, this is all part of the discussion that we've been having for a long time.
Yeah.
That's why it's, that's why it's such a hot topic and it's such a difficult topic. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And the other thing is the affordable housing side. We know we have the ability under the form-based code to get affordable housing, you know, above the grade level.
Yeah.
But we can't get the affordable housing if we don't have a less of a parking requirement. So it's a complicated bunch of things going together.
Yeah, and and also the main street, main street is going to be redeveloped actually. It's going to be, uh, redone. There's going to be more, there's going to be some parking applied on, on the side streets, uh, on this, on the main street. There's going to be, it's going to be all redone. And as part of that process, that's why we're trying to get ahead of that and get, look at these potential properties that we could buy at that point. And we're looking at multiple ways and this is just one step. And I, I do understand where you're coming from.
But you don't have those properties yet.
No, you're right, valid, yeah, which. Yeah, which I understand where you're coming from, but like we've, I've actually been working with other, some of the other developers on providing, um, working with businesses in the area to provide off-street parking for them, which has been working, but we're only, we're going to run out of that, that additional space very, very soon. There's only so many spaces that they can give up to help out. And then eventually now we're at a point where there's no development. So that's why we're kind of doing a lot of these different things to try to make that work.
Oh, I want to recognize.
I can, I can spend time. No, um, my apologies, Rachel Cosera, thirty Grand Harvard Road. Um, I just wanted to say that the gentleman and Mr. King, uh, just stated, uh, what I was coming up to state, that if we're creating new developments, how would there be adequate parking for the folks that, you know, would move into those spots? So, thank you, thank you.
And, yes, Kathleen?
I have a question. Do we need to vote on this today in order for this to?
So either today or at the next meeting.
Let's wrap it up because next me, I mean, let's do this, this meeting because the next meeting is going to be jammed too.
Um, well, I was going to ask where the point five, like what the logic behind that?
Yeah, so and that's based off of a lot of, uh, so I looked at a couple of studies that were done for, um, uh, Columbia, Ohio. Um, this was all that came out of that, uh, conference that we did. And what, um, their study showed was like a lot of their, um, they reduced from one to half a parking space within a lot of their transit-oriented areas, which are, which actually promoted the growth because a lot, some of those people were taking the trains and using, uh, business owners, you know, businesses to park, um, their cars. They were using, hopefully, you know, discussions with the mart garage will also occur. Um, so as well as there was an error, which I wanted to show the board, but I didn't get a chance at the last meeting, there was a study that was done in twenty eighteen, I think it was, by Worldwide Engineering or some Worldwide Tech that looked at this. And within their study, um, talked about all of the, you know, how we could promote this number, um, promote the development down there. So they, one of theirs was like getting rid of the parking requirement. So I'm looking to go half a space to kind of meet that happy medium to see, does it work?
And, um, sorry to ask this, but if, if we don't, right, cause it's like, I would like to see this presentation and it seems like we are now under a pressure of time to, to get this in.
Which presentation? The parking study?
The materials and the stuff that you're referencing.
Yeah, the parking. Yeah.
Um, can, can this be bumped to spring or is there like a big reason?
Um, there are, there are developments that are in the works currently right now that are, that we've been talking about and explaining that this is a possibility that would be going. But, you know, it's more of a, does the, you know, do these multiple developments occur or do they wait? But it's something that we've been, I mean, I know air has been discussing this for a long.
Years and years. And what, here's something we know is a fact. Under the current parking regulations, we're not getting businesses interested coming down to, coming to downtown. That is a fact and it's been a fact for years. You come to downtown mid-afternoon, it's a dead zone. It's dead. And we've been talking to people in real estate and what's going on? Why isn't there interest in this town? They look at the parking require, requiring, they walk away. So, you know, I'm interested and I think that going a half step first and just seeing is worthwhile.
And just to clarify first, so town meeting, this one is a two-thirds, right?
Yes.
And I just want to reference one thing. This is the residential use.
Yeah, this is only for residential.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
Because I think the commercial use is totally different.
Yes, commercial still, but remember, a lot of these buildings have residential.
Exactly, right. And we want residents living downtown. So we're trying to encourage the development of residential property downtown.
Also have the MBTA, which is our form-based code. That's, so that's another thing is they can't provide the parking, so.
What's the MBTA parking requirement?
It's still one.
It's still one.
Cause we legally weren't allowed to go any lower. That was what their requirement was. So under our form-based code, that's why we're trying to do it under there to see, will that promote it under the form-based code?
Uh, sorry.
It's the black area.
Yeah, but isn't that somewhat in the MBTA overlay?
So the black is the MBTA overlay district. They're just over our form-based codes.
So if somebody's there, they can go under.
Either the MBTA or the form-based code.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the select board to post a warrant to approve the proposed amendments to section three twenty dash nine, one, two off-street parking requirements.
And just as a reminder, once again, town meeting makes the final vote. If town meeting doesn't feel like they want that, then it's done. Then it's, it's, that's the democratic way.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, just, just, I wasn't going to, but this, and thank you, everyone, for having a good debate. Because aside from committees, this is the second best place and thank you, public, because this is really where the good, good debates happen on these topics.
Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
No.
Julie?
Yes.
Here votes aye, it's passed. Uh, the fourth item.
Is the.
Yeah, you want to take us through that?
Yes, so this is, uh, um, to see if the town will approve the vote, uh, the, will vote to approve the proposed amendments to section three twenty ten point, one point five density bonus. So as, as everyone knows, we've, when we went through the process of the density bonuses recently, this was my first go-through with that. I noticed quite a lot of issues with it. And the big thing, this is kind of to clarify just specifically the density bonuses. Get that cleaned up so that there is no confusion as to how it works. So under section ten point, one point five, the way it's going to, the, the way it would read is they are calculated by determining the allowable unit count under section ten point, one point four without rounding fractional units up or down and then multiplying that number by the person, and we're striking the hundred percent plus because that makes no sense, by the percentages associated with each of the following density bonuses and adding them all up for a total. Resulting fractional units, if any, shall be rounded up or down as in section ten point, one point four. This is to clean up that, clarify, the, the confusion as to what that hundred percent means.
Some people are confused.
I have spoken with other engineers that read it the same way. So that's why I want to just clean it up.
That's scary.
Okay, so what's important here is that the, the ten point, one, four is the yield plan, right?
Yep, it's the yield plan.
So basically we're saying everything's done by the yield plan first.
And then you multiply.
Then we go to each of the density bonuses.
Yep.
And we determine which ones we like or we don't like and we add them on.
Correct. Yes. The second one is under A. If the applicant allows deeded public access to the open space portion of the property and the planning board finds that the, that such public access provides a, I remove the significant and the recreational benefit to the public. So on this one, the thinking behind it was, I feel like we got a little caught up on the benefit to the town. It's really not about the town, it's about the public. Because it's about the public in that area who are going to live there, who are in the surrounding, um, area, who would take, get a benefit of that trail, that pocket park, that open space. It's not what the town gets from it. Because the town, yes, we get a benefit from it because it's open space, but it's really not for the town's benefit. It's for the residents and the public in that area.
I think the wording public on in the previous sentence ties into the word public in that sentence. Was that your intent?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Is that, is the only two red lines?
Nope.
Uh, no, 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 so. And then, uh, it says, I got rid of the or here, it's just a comma, other geological interests and et cetera. So that's kind of, um, like the rock face that we were talking about on, on Lincoln Hill.
Would we really give a bonus if said, well, we got this beautiful rock face for people to see?
If people want to have a trail along it, yeah. Uh, under conservation, the conservation analysis, you know, that's a big point.
My percentage.
But it's.
A maximum of ten percent.
I mean, there's only a ten percent bonus on this. So if you have ten units, that's one unit.
And we also get to deliberate at the time when it comes, it's very context dependent, specific to, right, each circumstance.
Yes.
I mean, just a little bolder, maybe no, but a significant, we have, we would determine together with, what we, we would have to come to an agreement, like we would agree, that's a significant feature, okay.
It was more of a, I, in the context of like when the conservation analysis came out for Lincoln Hill and that rock face was a very, something that the conservation felt should be protected. That's like something where we would say is, would fall in that category.
And then B is simply, um.
So B, this one, basically, so we're striking all of it because under our new inclusionary housing bylaw, we already have a density bonus for affordable units. So all we're doing is referencing that. So we're not going to be confused and have to have the Affordable Housing Trust, or Affordable Housing Committee make a recommendation as to which one. It's, it's clear cut, it's this. And then D, so this was something that I had been working on. We had originally been working on some, you know, cottage-style developments, you know, ideas and creating a bylaw of that. And my original intent with like the Lincoln Hill project, I keep, I know I keep using it as an example, but it's just the one that we've worked on since I've been here, so from start to almost to the end. We wanted smaller units. And so what this one is, is to promote, if you build those smaller units, the more small A affordable units, then we can, there's a bonus that you could get. And it's a maximum of thirty percent. So, you know, it's not a huge bonus, but it's enough that will, you could offset some of those costs for creating those smaller units.
So we're just encouraging a greater variety of unit sizes, which we hope would be reflected different price ranges.
Yes.
A greater variety, right?
Exactly. You know, when you have a smaller unit like, you know, fifteen hundred square feet, it's not going for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, we want that smaller five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, you know, that's kind of what the thinking behind this was. And we struck out the solar stuff because that's already a requirement.
Everything's solar ready is requirement. Okay, Kathleen, you had your hand up?
My question is, how does this interact with affordable houses? So the, the thing I have in mind is if, if you have your, uh, plan and you have the, the units that are marked affordable, um, can the plan then say, okay, I'm going to make the affordables, the small ones? My understanding is they can't do that because now they are distinguished.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, under, under the law.
There isn't that concern of like, okay, I'm going to make the affordable small and then I'm going to get extra units that way.
No, because, because even if you were to, like, no, it, it's not a concern because of that.
Okay.
And even if you were to try to apply that, let's say, you know, there's a, there's a development of there are thirty units, ten percent of them have to be affordable. So you would only build three sixteen hundred square foot buildings and call, like, that it doesn't help you get any bonuses. Like it just doesn't really, because for here, it's, um, for every unit you build, you get an additional two. So like if you build three, it doesn't really help you anything at all.
So I think it's a great question.
But it's also not allowed. Sorry, but I just wanted to work through the process.
When I first read this, and I'm glad that Kathleen asked this question, I just automatically thought that the whole project had to be sixteen hundred square feet. Or less. Are you saying that the project can be segmented into some that are sixteen hundred and some that aren't sixteen hundred?
That is correct. If you, for however many sixteen hundred or less you build within your development, you can ask. you can ask for an additional two.
Okay, I, I don't go for that. I think that's too, I'd say one. I just think that's too, too strong.
It's capped at thirty percent, and it's under the discretion of the board.
It's too strong in what sense?
I mean, I think it gives them too much, you know. It's two for one.
It's still under the heading that it's at the discretion of a special, special...
So you're basically saying, if we have a project that's got, uh, tell us use ten units.
Yeah.
And one of them is sixteen-hundred.
I, I would tell you not to vote for that. Because I would tell you not to vote for that. If they only provide one, that's, that's not really the intent of this. I would say that you should not vote for that.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is, there's nothing here that says the entire project has to be sixteen-hundred square feet or less, each unit.
It's discretionary to the board. So if like, a project comes in with thirty units, and they say ten of them are gonna be under sixteen-hundred square feet, that's something I would be like, okay.
So you're gonna give twenty extra.
Twenty extra units?
They could get up to. That's up to the board.
Up to, up to.
Up to thirty percent of them.
Yes.
Up to thirty percent of the...
It'd have to be a seventy-unit develop, seventy-unit by right.
Who provided they have all the setbacks?
Yeah, they have to meet all the setbacks.
It's gotta fit.
All the dimensional requirements. It, it just, it, it, yeah. You're not, it, I agree with Nathan. It's like, you're not gonna have a development that could have seventy units if you are, you're only proposing. Yeah, by right, if you're proposing, you know, thirty.
It says to a maximum of thirty of the original count. So, if the ten, if the yield plan equals ten units, no matter what you do, you get three, you get three more.
Add, add the discretion.
And so that's why I put that in.
The discretion of the board. I agree. All, all the density bonuses are at the discretion of the board.
And that's why I said, uh, as the maximum of the base allowable unit count.
I got it.
Because I, I agree, if you look at what Nathan said, it's like, you could just make some crazy astronomical, but you can't because of that cap.
I'm clearer on it now, thank you.
Any public input on this? Yes, come on up.
I'm waiting all night.
For this?
Yes.
Oh, wow, wow.
I have nothing else to say, otherwise.
Iron Woman prize.
I don't think so. It's all good. Okay. So this is specific to this section...
Ten point one point five.
A. The second paragraph. Don't care about any of the other things.
Yes.
You guys figure out density bonus things. However, overall, the bylaws are in place to guide boards and committees to preserve the integrity of the town, as well as protecting the rights and the interest of this public community. We already established that, right? So, it is in our best interest that the interpretation of the bylaw lean toward the benefit of the town itself in its wording, then it is valid. If it allows a loophole for developers to gain advantage over the town, then the bylaw is flawed, right? That being said, with A, after your other geological interest, can we...
Oh, oh, you're talking about A. Oh, oh, she's not, she doesn't...
I'm on, uh, page, is one twenty-eight?
Yes, okay, AA.
AA.
Okay, we weren't sure if you were talking about D, because that's what we were just discussing.
Okay, AA.
Oh, AA, okay.
AA.
Yep. Yep.
So sorry, I thought I was...
Sorry, no, 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 I, I, no, we're good.
Okay. So is it possible to add language at the end that leaves no doubt or no reason for interpretation, such as, um, other geological interests, as well as finding that access does not interfere with or have direct impact on a butter's private property? There's, there's no re, there's no room for interpretation there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
What do you guys think?
Okay.
Could you, could you say that slowly?
Of course. I can email it later if you'd like.
Why don't you email that?
Yes. Of course.
Oh, you want just voted like, next...
Yeah, because I don't, I wanna make sure we get this properly written out and everything. We would just vote it, it's only, it would only be this last one that would need to be voted at the next meeting, so it wouldn't be too...
And then I'm off to big holidays, I swear to God.
Why don't we just vote on it now? Just put the language in. We can't do that. We can't amend the language right here?
You can, it's...
It'll take two minutes, right? We're here.
I'm game.
Let's do it. Are you guys up for it?
Okay.
Hear it again.
So Danny added, "other geological interests."
Comma.
Comma. As well as finding that access does not interfere, interfere with, or have direct impact on a butter's private property.
Interfere with, or...
Have direct impact. So the other question, legal question.
Yeah, so the, this is the one question I have on that is, what do you call a direct impact?
Right.
Yeah, that's tricky.
Town council.
Somebody looking your way.
We can go back to Lincoln Hill as an example.
Yeah.
This development has, will have, no question, a direct impact on my property. That aside, what I'm referring to specifically is the request to put a walking trail in my backyard. That, to me, is an invasion of my privacy, and that would be an interference with the other, a butter's property. My private property is being compromised, in theory, and I'm not talking about the thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This point. My property is being compromised to allow the other property to do what they wanna do.
I, I have, I wanna be on the record saying I don't agree with that, because I don't wanna be on the record as if I, I, I see that you're, you have a right to say that.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure that, I don't want my silence be interpreted as assent. I, okay, that's why I'm...
I just wanna, I would want to run that by town council.
Yeah, me too, because, because it, direct impact on our butter's is huge. That's...
Right, it is huge, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't it funny how it's coming up now instead of a few months ago?
That all of these are at the, at the discretion of the planning board. So, there, there's no guarantee that any of this happens, that that's exactly what happened.
I'm not saying this apart, yeah, and I think that...
These are all at the discretion of the plan.
And I will note, and I will note that, did you hear the conversation today about the trail? I mean, we explicitly...
You understand.
Absolutely.
No, don't put the trails there, because, right, it, it's too close to your butter's, and there's no privacy.
Exactly. In that instance, it's worked in our favor. In other instances, not so much, but if, again, if a bylaw is set to guide a board or committee and avoid loopholes for developers, not to say they're dishonest or what have you, but if, without allowing for loopholes for developers to come in and take advantage of it.
I would just...
The trail's an opposite of a loophole.
Yeah, no.
The trails perhaps, but other things perhaps not.
And that's the thing, this would only apply to that.
To the trails?
Yeah, this would only, yeah. So this is not for all of the others. Your comment would only apply to A, which is the, the, the public access portion.
Why is it how you access the natural area? I, I don't know.
Loophole.
You know, I'm...
Loophole.
But, what's, what's, what's the, what's the, um, the grievance? If, if a property can have, if, if, if the fifty percent that is developable could have fifty, fifty percent more homes on it, is that, is that a detriment to the butter's? Right, so if there's other ways to get that percentage, that density bonus, would you be, would you be, uh, amenable to, to other means so that we can get more housing and more units into that small space?
I'm not opposed to housing.
Right.
I'm not opposed to affordable housing. I'm not opposed to building, developing, growth, anything like that. What I'm opposed to is when something comes in and completely upsets a natural order in existence
Yeah.
by law, because it's private property. But the existing private property may be directly impacted negatively because of the other person coming in.
So...
That's a tough one, I mean, that's...
I, I guess...
It's a very fine line. It's like, where do the rights end, and where do the rights begin?
But I, I'm just, I'm gonna, I wanna bring your attention specifically to this language, rather than a philosophical debate about the whole world of, of bylaws. I, I, I would say, my opinion among just one of five is, I would have a hard time with language as broad as direct impact on a butter's. I, I can't include that.
That's where I have a trouble, is I would have to run that by town council. That would, if we're...
That doesn't...
We would be in the law.
That's all I can ask. Because I think it has to be a consideration. Existing residents have rights as well.
We recognize that.
Yeah.
And you do. But, if there's a loophole in the bylaw, you're stuck as well.
What's the loophole that you wanna close?
She thinks it's a loophole, because...
They could do anything?
What's fascinating about this is, this is in here because the town wants to promote people walking on trails.
Right.
That's what the idea was about. And now it's taken a whole...
I'm not technically, you know, my big thing here is not talking about trails. We know this. Let's be obvious about that, okay? You can use the trails as one example, but it's a much bigger picture.
But that's the problem, is this could only be applied to the open space, like, assets of it.
Okay, so, can you reword it so that it doesn't say "direct" a butter's, or, you know, word it better so that the existing citizens are better protected?
She can make it, she can make it, amend it on town meeting floor.
Uh, only to, only to, only to reduce the language. You can't make...
You can't, you can't make it any greater.
You're making it more restrictive, you're right. But this is a strange thing. The, the benefit is, we see the benefit as people having access. We talked about this a lot. Conservation talks about it a lot. This particular, particular layout ends up being wrapped with a butter's around it.
Yeah.
So the concept's somewhat different.
In, in this specific context, yes, because there is...
And that's why it went away.
Yeah. Whereas in, if you go to another property, let's talk about Stretton Hill.
Yeah, insisted on the trails.
There's, we insisted, because there's no...
Because it's out in the open, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's no one, right. And it's also abutting a trail system, two trail systems.
Okay.
So what, what's the temper of the board? Do we wanna, we, we wanna punt to the next one meeting, or, and, and get an opinion, or do we, do we wanna come to a, a, a decision on this here?
So in terms of what she's...
Yeah.
I'm gonna just say, I think, I like the direction this is going. I, uh, for, for density bonuses, I, I think that, um, there needs to be more allowance for a density bonus. It's a bit early to vote on this, but I, I, this one is, this one, there's, there's enough benefit. I'm, I'm in favor, but we can get, we can get some more language.
So what I'm asking, though, is is there interest in pushing this to the next meeting?
This specific one.
This one, just this one, not the other three. We've already voted...
Yeah, ten, it, it would just be ten point one point five.
About the language?
Yeah. Well, it's a... It's, it's whether or not the board wants to.
They have to go by us first.
But, we don't have to... That's the question. I'm gonna speak up personally. I'd rather, I'd, I'd like to keep the language as it is and vote tonight. That's my person, that's my opinion, one of five. I'm asking you, what would you like to do?
I'll, I'll tell you what my opinion is. I, I think the language in sec, the real Section A, the first Section A, which starts out by saying, "The density bonuses are given by special permit at the discretion of the planning board based on the ex-public benefit." I think that covers the discussion, that when we get to that about a concern in the real world, we will answer it right there.
That's what I think, too.
At that particular time, it'll get answered.
That's the exact area that, if we had more time, I'd like to address, because I think it should be special, it should lean more to special permit and less to discretion.
Well, the special permit...
Special permit is discretion. That is the discretion.
The special permit is, is... We've gone through this. Special permit is, is, has criteria, and you meet that criteria, you know, only a capricious board would, would, can, can go against you.
Which is why I got rid of the significant and I added in, and...
Yeah, yeah, but, s, s, but this, this has been a problem.
Yeah.
I think, because, because we talk about, no, I won't feel false, false size. You wanna go to bed?
No, I hear you. Uh, this is a good enough discussion to keep me awake at ten-thirty at night.
Is the sense that you wanna move this to the next meeting? Is that even doable, Danny? I mean, looking at the meeting?
Wait, so, at the next meeting, we could. I mean, it would just be the one final vote.
I was gonna change between now.
And what can, whi, whi, which is?
I see the public benefit, especially, I hear the, I hear the language is there, as written.
That's what I think, too. And I also think that our, that we have the discretion, case by case, in that someone says, yeah, we wanna do this, and we go, no.
You have to get a special permit. I mean, that's a pretty strict requirement.
It's a higher bar, you know.
There is another comment.
Thank you.
Oh, did you, you're done?
Good.
Oh, I just wanna make sure, before you yield the floor. Beth?
I have to say still. I didn't know it was still.
Sorry, I just wasn't sure if you were closing public comment. Um, so, the, the point at which you're talking about open space here is land that requires a conservation restriction?
Yes.
So, I am very much of the opposite opinion, that once the town has the open space land, that it should be available for the public. And I certainly understand that you need to ensure that the actions that take place there are appropriately screened, and that everyone is respectful and things like that, but I think that the value of open space land is having public access. I therefore have always been really shocked that there's a benefit for offering public access, because that then means, you know, they get the, the density bonus, because that then means the assumption is that there's no public access, and that's mind-blowing to me.
Conservation restrictions can, can be that there is no public access.
Oh, I know, I know, but this implies and almost incentivizes kind of like that there is no public access.
No, this incentivizes to have the public access.
Right, but I, I mean, we could, you could also just say you have to have public access. Period.
The problem I have with that is that there are some places where that just isn't feasible, and the classic one is, this one. This would not be a place where we really wanna encourage lots of people to be roaming around. It just, it's not that kind of a space.
Right, but, but encouraging people to roam around is different from saying that you're restricting public, usually, public access is restricted whenever there's like a real rare threatened endangered species habitat issue, wetlands that you don't want to disturb. It's very rare that public access to town land is restricted because it might be close to a neighbor.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
Yeah. Again, you know, and I know this is not favorable, but, but this is where I come from as an open space and recreation advocate and conservation restriction, you know, this, this is my line of thinking.
Yeah. Oh, I, I mean, I a hundred percent agree with you. I always feel conservation restriction, open space should have access.
Yeah.
But there are, there are rare occasions in which they shouldn't.
Yeah, there are.
My personal opinion on a, this specific project that we have for us was, I think there should be, because it would be a benefit for the residents in that area. Obviously, the board did not agree with that. I'm sorry?
All of the board.
Oh, the board. Did not agree with that.
Me, some of the board.
Some of the board, okay, some of the board.
So, so again, I'm really curious about the origin of this
Yeah. density bonus. It's been there since...
Um, and then, and then the one, the sixteen-hundred square foot or less. I, you know, this is a huge change. I don't, you know, I don't like the solar one, um, but I think that this is a huge change, and I just wanna clarify how much you all have discussed this in meetings prior to the hearing tonight.
Um, we've had several discussions regard, um, within our portable work, um, housing work. We've been talking about this for over...
The sixteen-hundred square foot and things like that?
Yeah, because we've been looking at trying to do a, um,
Cottage.
a cottage-style development,
Right.
which we've been discussing for almost, over a year now.
Right, right. I just, I feel like seeing real examples of, you know, like, a, a area, you know, and, and also this kind of like notion of whether or not they could get multiple bonuses and just what you really end up with. I think that doing those exercises with real examples is gonna be...
So we had, we had someone from MHP give us a presentation regarding tiny homes. Like, we, we've, we've been vetting this for quite a bit.
Yeah, but like, where, but where it ends up, like, with a real example, if they take advantage of this bonus, and they take advantage of this bonus, what would this project look like?